Let's get the meeting started for the afternoon of April, excuse me, October 27th. We're all ready. We will.
I guess.
Call, Tony?
Minas?
President.
Morales?
Here.
Yep.
President.
Roscoe?
President.
Davis?
Here.
Ms. Barza?
Here.
Arenas?
Here.
Foley?
Here.
Camus? Jones?
Present.
Licardo?
Present. Thank you. If you're able, please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Since the flag. Of the United States of America. To the. Which is. Which stands. On the nation. By God. Indivisible. Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's invitation, Councilmember Foley will be presenting the 2020 District Nine Stars.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to present the recipients of the District Nine Stars. As just a refresher, last year or several years ago, when Judy Chirko was the council member, two time, two council members before me. She created this award to acknowledge unsung heroes within District Nine who were doing really good work to give back to the community. Last year, I brought it back, so I'm bringing it again today, although virtually. Normally, I would have these stars and their nominators here present, but we've been out taking pictures of them, and I wanted to share with you a little bit about them. Again, these are unsung heroes. These are individuals who are doing tremendous work in the city of San Jose and our community to make life a little better for those surrounding them. We received many nominations. We received so many that unfortunately, we wouldn't, weren't able to award them all, but we'd like to figure out a way to recognize every one of them. COVID made it a little bit different, and there was an emphasis on COVID in some of the awards that you'll hear about today and how our neighbors did wonderful work to help those in need. So we have a little slide deck. I'm going to introduce them. We went out and met with the District Nine Stars all socially distanced. We presented them with a plaque certificate yesterday and last Friday, and we also presented them with a chocolate star with their name on it. The first recipient is Jane Selig. She was nominated by her husband Jay. Jane created an organization called Stepping Stones. It's a nonprofit that gives guidance, information, and help to patients and caregivers that are dealing with terminal illnesses in Santa Clara County. Jane has clients coming from Cancer Carepoint who have end-of-life questions, as well as caregivers or family members that are in need of helpful information and resources. Jane has generously volunteered her time with Hospice of the Valley and continues to volunteer at Mission Hospice of San Mateo County, where she uses her knowledge to compassionately help the community. Jane is a compassionate self-starter, doing yeoman's work, and a 2020 District Nine Star recipient. Congratulations, Jane, and thank you for all you're doing. Next is Liz Warren, nominated by Allison Helmke. Liz has spent years serving on Stein Dorf Steam Schools Home and School Club on Cameron School District's Budget Oversight Committee and serves as an active participant in district board meetings. She facilitates school activities such as the drama program, which they did virtually this year, as many of our kids were able to do their performances through, through the benefit of Zoom. She continues, she also presented the Fall Festival, which is an event she ensures is affordable, openly accessible to everyone, and is budgeted equitably. She managed two fundraisers during Shelter in Place to raise money for Stein Dorf Steam School to by hosting a virtual auction for families and a read-a-thon for all students in lieu of their annual walk-a-thon. Liz is a Stein Dorf Steam School Rock Star and a 2020 District Nine Star recipient. Thank you, Liz, for all you do for Stein Dorf and your students there. Next is an organization called the Cambrian Park Los Gatos Maskmakers, nominated by Laura Sanders. Here's a picture of some of the mask makers, and you can see one of the really unusual masks on the right-hand side. That's actually the nominator, Laura Sanders. The mask has a plastic piece in front of it so that you can read lips. They've made over 2,000 face masks and distributed them throughout the Cambrian Park and Los Gatos community free of charge to reduce the spread of COVID. The personal protective equipment these neighbors produced were delivered to elementary, middle, and high schools, hospitals, hearing impaired, deaf, and hard of hearing programs. Holly Sfotochild and Mackie Hirata coordinated and managed 180 hard-working neighbors, all united in their belief that fat face masks save lives, should be free, and should be readily available to anyone. The Cambrian Park Los Gatos Maskmakers have worked tirelessly to stop the spread of COVID. They have saved lives, and this is why they are a 2020 District Nine Star recipient. Thank you to everyone who has made a positive impact on our community. Thank you to all of the nominators for the wonderful words you, you said about the fabulous people within our community. Congratulations to the recipients for receiving this award. The city of San, San Jose is grateful to have you call this city your home. With that, Mayor, I hand it back to you.
Thank you, and thanks to all the Nine Stars, and thank you, Councilmember Foley, for recognizing them. We'll move forward to Orders of the Day. If anyone on the councilbody changes the printed agenda. If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second.
Motion. Let's vote.
Minas?
Yes.
Morales?
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Barza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Aye.
Foley?
Aye.
Camus?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Licardo?
Aye.
Thank everyone. We'll go to the closed session report. Nora?
Hi, there is nothing to report out of call session.
Thank you. On the consent calendar, Councilmember Rans would like to pull item 2.17, which is Approval of Faith Leaders Appreciation Month. Are there other items to be pulled?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull item 2.14.
Okay, 2.14, which is the National Disability.
Yes.
Other items to be pulled?
Mayor, this is Nora. I think the item on the $200.
Yeah, that's item 2.7?
Right. I think Councilmember Arenas wanted that, wanted to be able to bifurcate the vote on that item.
Oh, okay, right. Is there a conflict issue?
Yes.
Sure. Okay, fine. So we'll vote on 2.7 separately. Any other items? Let's go to the public. Mr. Beekman?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mayor. Does 2.8, if, does that have the same recusal as 2.7?
That's a good question for Nora. I assume it does.
So we, we should pull 2.8 as well?
Well, actually, that's the attorney fee settlement.
I don't know. I'm just asking.
Member works in one of those, those bargaining units. I think that's the only issue. Or whether or not, or you're suggesting that perhaps Councilmember Rans does?
Correct.
Okay, I see. Got it. I actually don't know which bargain group it is. Councilmember Rans?
Yeah, it does include the OE3, the Operating Engineers Local 3. But I would, I would defer to Nora, as this is a settlement agreement for attorney fees. I was sure to recuse myself on 2.7, but I'm leaving it up to her on 2.8.
Nora, I think you're.
I muted. Yeah, 2.8 is an essence, a benefit to the, to the union, so I, and its fees that they're being reimbursed for. So I think to that extent, just to be on the safe side, it makes sense to go ahead and bifurcate that also.
Okay. All right. Thank you for raising that, Councilmember Rans, Ms. Barza. And we will bifurcate those two items. Any other items to be pulled? All right, Mr. Beekman?
Hi, thank you. Happy end of October now. This is our last October session. Your council and committee approval of the minutes this week is mostly dedicated to future policing issues. Reminder that the ideas of reimagining the future of police does not have to be a dour or grim affair. Reimagining is a decent word that has been developed as how we can be practical, open, and creative, as this can be a time for more people to be able to participate in our community future. So they themselves can ask, what can be the future of policing and how we can, can we begin to better limit the use of the prison military industrial complex? This can be creative, interesting questions of community, long-term sustainability, and peace that should be of interest to most everyone. And part of the years in developing peaceful, good practices that can ask local government to step back from a more domineering role into a role more as a simple facilitator to allow for more open democratic practices and community decision-making. This is the work to ask, what can be peace, not war, that is happening around the country at this time that can create some interesting forms of better reasoning and can naturally develop work toward our better human nature at the national, international level. Is with all this in mind, I would like to offer a few words about item 2.19. Overall, Measure T public oversight seems to be headed for a road more as oversight for its tax issues, when it could have been committed to better technology oversight practices an entire community could participate in. This brings us back full circle to the beginning of this speech to again ask and remind, we are at a time people of a local community can begin the process to work together of how to better address the future of this country's prison, military, industrial, and technology complex. I again ask and hope the city government of San Jose want to openly address and want to work with the community and these promising ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Roland?
LeBron? Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Roland LeBron. I'd like to speak to item 2.13, which is another half a million dollars for the Blossom Mill 101 overpass. So as you may recall, we raised the issue that essentially they were connecting homeless encampment on the West Side under the overpass and dead-ending at the Arco Station, Monterey Highway. And asking you to spend another half a million dollars to fix the dead-ending, and what they're going to do is to add a Class 1 bypass under, sorry, a Class 1 bike and bed lane under the Blossom Mill overpass to connecting, to connect it to Albert, sorry, to Zander's Crossing, which will go across Monterey Highway and the Caltrain tracks, but doesn't go anywhere else. So I want, I want to turn the clock back to, to the MOU for the I.A. Star Agreement. And Mayor Ricardo, I believe you agreed at the time that yes, that seven and a half million dollars was to improve the connection between the, the Caltrain station and Coyote Creek and the, and the Eden Vale. And I, I don't understand why we keep on going down the route where we are. Why don't we basically take this bikeway, you know, along the overpass, run away completely, and instead invest this half a million dollars to what we should have done in the first place, which is to connect Eden Vale to the Blossom Mill at Caltrain Station? And I really appreciate your support because I'm at the point right now, when I basically am facing no other possibility than file a lawsuit, just like the people did on a, or live on a near, near charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Tessa Woodman-C?
Yes, thank you. This is Tessa Woodman-C, and I was commenting on 2.7, which was stipend for employees working from home due to COVID-19 pandemic. And it was very concerning to hear that the people who work for our city, our inspectors, had to plead for you to have them work at home. And I think that, that shows the business-friendly orientation of our city, and that we have to start thinking about public health as the number one issue. And so I'm seeing that the workers are coming back into City Hall. That should be suspended until, you know, anyone who can work at home should be able to work at home. And they definitely, the inspectors, because I've even had an inspection in my home that was virtual on the very beginning of the pandemic, and it went fine. And so these technologies that we have, we should definitely encourage them to be able to, you know, view it, you know, virtually, and there should be no issue with that. So I hope that goes forward for the safety of our inspectors and the safety of our community, because they're coming into our house, and we don't want that. And so really, we have to start thinking about public health as the number one issue in all of our decision-making. And so I guess that was basically it about that. I was just thinking if there was anything else, but, you know, basically, building our resilient neighborhoods is what we need to be putting our energy towards creating an economy that is local. That's the type of businesses we need to support is a, the garden, you know, building communities where we grow our own food and we create our own products. That's the type of infrastructure we need to support as we go forward in our, re- reimagining our communities. And the issue of buying land so we deal with our ecological collapse is very critical to our urban sustainability and creating those type of jobs for urban sustainability.
Thank you. Mr. Quigley, Tim, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's been a long time. I appreciate the opportunity to address the issue on the Environmental Impact Report and, and the St. James Park Revitalization Project as currently envisioned.
You know, Tim, actually, that's going to be on our regular schedule. I appreciate you raise your hand on that one, but it's not up until 7.2? So that's a ways off. We got several items to get through until then.
Sounds good.
Okay. Sorry for the mix-up. Person with the phone number ending 5140?
Yeah, I'd like to speak on item 2.7 regarding the employee working from home and their stipend. I'd like to know what they need $200 for. I mean, especially cops. What do they need $200 for? They're working from home? Firefighters, they working from home? What do they need $200 for? Everyone on this list is paid a lot of money, and I don't know how many of these people actually work from home. Now, I mean, if the Peace Officer Park Rangers Association, what do they need? A rake, a shovel? What do they need? Are they working from home? Are they working at the parks? My question is, what do we need to give $200 to highly-paid unit employees who already? who already could get a lot of their supplies and things that they need from the city itself? A lot of companies, people working from home, they get the, the monitors or computers or whatever items that they need from their company. They don't, they don't have to go out and purchase it. It's the company, the, the, the city should already have the, the things that they need. And I want to know who is working from home in this group of people? Now, maybe the architects and engineers are, but the electrical workers, how are they working from home? I'd like, I'd like the city council to answer the question of why does the taxpayer have to shell out another $200 for highly-paid city workers who have lifetime healthcare and pensions? What, what do I need to give them $200? We, we as a community need to give them $200 for them. By the way, once again, I want to know in this list of 11 groups of people who actually works from home. So I'll tell you what, I'll buy the, I'll buy the Sisters Park Rangers Association a shovel for some manure at the Rose Garden, okay? They can, they can start, they can start there. How about that? They can work there, you know, use a rake, a shovel, maybe pick up the trash.
Jeremy Taylor?
On work from home, $200 is nothing. I would actually double the salaries of all employees if I could. So we should absolutely give incentives to keep good employees. In the corporate world, 400 to 500 is not unregular. For 2.9, an idea for buying the software and services. If you're entering a two-year agreement, you could ask them for a 10% discount or something if you pay two years upfront. So if we know we're going to use it for two years, I think it's worth trying to get a discount if you pay upfront. And you could also get a guaranteed price for the five-year contract. Again, you would offer to pay upfront. For 2.10, with regards to recruiting for hundreds of positions, I don't think it's smart to give a recruiting company a flat rate. And I happen to know the vendor. I know Sea Levels there. They are a great company. But if you have positions to fill, what you should do is open it to the market. So the city of San Jose couldn't not just send these to CPSHR. They could send these roles to CPSHR and five other vendors. With regard to 3.5, I think every council member already knows who they're going to choose for the redistricting committee. No matter who applies, how much effort is put in. What I think would be great is for the council to establish a template or criteria for the type of person that they want and have the council members be able to show why they picked this specific person. Because today, unfortunately, if nothing changes, they're going to pick who they want so they get the results that they want. And this should really be open to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Coming back to council on consent. First, let's take a motion on item 2.7. Oh, Dave, I'm sorry. You got your hand up there?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to be clear with the council that the stipend is only for employees that are working at home. That's, it's about 40% of our workforce. And employees working from home, they do have city-issue computers, but there are other costs that they're encountering like improving and enhancing their, their internet connection, stuff like that. So it's really for just those employees working from home who, who have encountered additional costs by doing so.
Okay, thank you.
Move approval?
Okay, that motion was on item 2.7. Is that right, Councilmember Asparza?
Yes, minus number 11.
Second.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mayor, is, this is also bifurcated, correct?
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah, that's why I moved it minus number 11.
Got it. Okay, so we'll just vote on that portion of the motion. I mean, everybody except for Councilmember Arenas, let's vote.
I didn't quite hear you, Tony, but yes.
All right, Peralas?
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Asparza?
Yes.
Arenas is recused fully.
Aye.
Camus?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Ricardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, on the remainder of 2.7?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Actually, I think that's the portion you can't vote on, Councilmember.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, then we did it, then we, we, we did it backwards then.
Didn't you just?
I think we did it backwards. So we just voted on item 11, or I thought we voted on everything but item 11.
That's what I thought, too.
Yeah.
The backgrounds always crack me up. It's like a state.
Okay, so we'll ask everybody if they could please mute themselves. So on this item, this only relates to the item for which Councilmember Arenas is precluded from voting. So we'll hear a motion on that.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion from the Vice Mayor, second from Councilmember Asparza. Let's vote.
And so with the last one was for everything but 11?
That's correct.
So I need a verbal from Arenas. Are you voting yes on the first one? Because Mark 2 is recused.
Okay, that, that was on the motion. They kept writing 11. Okay.
Yes. Okay, so now Jimenez?
Yes.
Peralas?
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Asparza?
Yes.
Now Arenas is recused. Foley?
Aye.
Camus?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Ricardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, let's try this one more time with item 2.8.
Motion to approve?
With the exception of OE3.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, there's a motion, Councilmember Arenas, as to all groups except for OE3. Let's vote on that.
Arenas?
Yes.
Peralas?
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Asparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Camus?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Ricardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the remainder of 2.8, is there a motion?
Second.
Motion, Councilmember Foley, second, Councilmember Asparza. Let's vote on the remainder.
Arenas?
Aye.
Peralas?
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Asparza?
Yes.
Arenas? Recused. Foley?
Aye.
Camus?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Ricardo?
Aye.
All right, item 2.14 is approval of October as the 75th anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month and the 30th anniversary of Americans with Disabilities Act. Councilmember Foley?
Thank you, Mayor. Today, Vice Mayor Jones and I ask you all to join us in celebrating two great milestones and two big steps towards a more equitable society for all. This October is the 75th anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month and 2020 being the 30th year of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Celebrating NDAM means increasing education and awareness of disability employment issues and celebrating the many contributions of America's workers with disabilities. It is imperative that our workplaces be committed to creating an inclusive workplace culture for all employees and job seekers with disabilities. The Americans with Disabilities Act was enacted in July of 1990, making this year the 30th year of this civil rights legislation that works to increase access and opportunity for people with disabilities across society. This legislation has played a historic role in empowering people with disabilities to fully participate in all aspects of society by removing barriers to employment, public services, public accommodations, public and private transportations, among other things. Using today to commemorate these two milestones is an opportunity to increase mindfulness about people with disabilities and the ways in which we can be more inclusive and accessible as a city and as a workplace. I urge the city of San Jose and all of its businesses to pledge to continue taking steps to recruit, hire, retain, and advance individuals with disabilities and work to pursue the goals of the ADA and Quality of Opportunity. I challenge you all to consciously and actively seek out information for the benefit of our community of people with disabilities. Be aware of the existence of access needs and respect that we all have different ones. Discover how you can make your own communications and operations more accessible for all. With that, I'd like to turn this over to Vice Mayor Jones for additional comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Foley. Today, we're recognizing the 75th anniversary of the National Disability Employment Awareness Month and the 30th anniversary of the enactment of the Americans with Disabilities Act. Each year, I mark these historical milestones and their incredible impact on our society by celebrating at City Hall. Typically, we have attract or attract about 1,500 attendees every year. Obviously, this year, we're not able to host this event due to COVID-19, but I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge this amazing population of talented people. Let us raise our awareness about people with different abilities, the challenges they overcome every day, and make them feel as equal parts of our society by continuing to recruit, hire, and advance them so they can achieve their dreams. Thank you, Councilmember Foley, and thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Foley. Okay, then we'll move forward to item 2.17. Councilmember Arenas? This is Approval of Faith Leaders Appreciation Month.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm really honored to recognize October as Faith Leaders Appreciation Month. And as you all know, during this pandemic, faith leaders from all spiritual backgrounds have played a crucial role in the well-being of our community. During difficult times, they provide us with guidance and comfort and helping hands when we are in need and absolutely some inspiration to push us through the times of struggle. And these certainly have been times of struggle with the pandemic and natural disasters hurting our most vulnerable in our communities. While every day, our faith leaders are practicing what they preach in making our city a much warmer, more neighborly place, they're at the front lines of volunteer work since the start of the pandemic, distributing necessities like masks and food to our neighbors in need. In that spirit, I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize Evergreen Islamic Center, whose home is in District 8, for their work during this pandemic, specifically the food distribution they began hosting, and many of you have appreciated, have attended. Thank you, Mayor, for, for supporting our community. I'd like to share a video featuring their board president, Akbar Said, sharing a few words of encouragement with all of us. Thank you.
My name is Akbar Said. I am president of Evergreen Islamic Center. Honorable mayor, city council members, and all brothers and sisters and you present here greeting of peace. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to speak to you. It is my great pleasure. The Holy Quran, the final word of Almighty God, commands us in chapter 76, verse number eight and nine. "And feed with food the needy, desperate in need, the orphans, and the prisoners, for the love of Almighty God only," saying, "We feed you for the sake of Almighty God only. We wish for no reward nor thanks from you." We obey his commands. It is mandatory on every Muslim to contribute annually 2.5% of their wealth towards fund called zakat, which means to purify. This is purely voluntary on every Muslim. It is one of the five pillars of Islam. These funds are used to help needy. Ever since the COVID-19 pandemic, Evergreen Islamic Center is focused to help those affected by this pandemic. Every two weeks, Evergreen Islamic Center is organizing food drive. Please help us for its success. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And, and that is it for our comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Camus?
Thank you, Mayor, and I really appreciate Councilmember Arenas's pulling this from the agenda and talking about just the contributions of our faith community. I could tell you that just this last weekend, faith volunteers all over San Jose, in fact, Santa Clara County, have fixed up houses for people, cleaned up expressways. Actually fixed the Park Ranger Station at Almeda Lake. And I, you know, just can't thank them enough that the, the religious institutions in my district actually did fundraising and, and provided supplies for the fire victims recently in Santa Cruz and ferried over eight, eight truckloads of, of, of supplies to Santa Cruz residents. And, and quite frankly, I've been working with faith leaders along with the mayor's office to help stimulate a job growth in the economy for people who've been displaced from jobs. And we can't do this without our, without the participation of our faith community. So I want to truly thank them and thank God that they're here and helping us.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments on item 2.17? Then I would just ask for a motion on all of the remaining consent items. There's all the items other than 2.7 and 2.8.
Motion to approve the remaining consent items.
Second.
Right, there's a motion and a second. I wanted to request for an offline discussion, you know, Roland LeBrun, as he often does, raises very interesting points on item 2.13. And Dave, perhaps I could just have an offline conversation with the transportation team just to understand better whether his concern about whether or not we are varying from our original funding plan and the original objective of that funding is, is, is correct or not. I honestly don't know, and I look forward to having a conversation offline.
Yeah, very good. We can follow up on that.
Great, thank you. Okay, on the remainder of the items, let's vote.
Yes.
Peralas?
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Asparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Aye.
Foley?
Aye.
Camus?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Ricardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Item 3.1 is a report of the city manager. Dave?
Thank you, Mayor. We have no report today.
Okay. 3.3 is a summary vacation of a street easement on Industrial Avenue with reservation of public storm drainage.
Thank you, Mayor and City Councils. This is Matt Cano, Director of Public Works. We don't have any report. We don't have any presentation today.
Okay. Anybody like to make that motion? Or not?
Move approval?
Okay. Vice Mayor, got it. We'll give it the second to Councilmember Asparza. Let's vote.
Arenas?
Yes.
Peralas?
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Roscoe? Roscoe? I'll come back. Davis?
Aye.
Asparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Camus?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Ricardo?
Aye.
Going back to Roscoe? Okay, marking absent.
Okay, great. Item 3.4 is the Acceptance of Retirement Plans Comprehensive Annual Investment Fee Reports for the Last Calendar Year. Prabhu and Roberto are here. I think both of them think this is, we still may be the only major public plan and that reports out on the investment fees that are paid for managers or by the plans. And I appreciate the transparency that Roberto and Prabhu have brought to this gentleman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to acknowledge trustee Vincent Zari is here to support the presentation, former chair of the Police and Fire Board, former chairman of the Investment Committee, and one of the longest-serving trustees, so be happy to have him with us here. I'm going to start a screen share here. And hopefully, everyone can see my screen. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, this is one of the most comprehensive fee reports produced by any public plan. There's only a handful of plans, including both the large California plans and Orange County, I believe, to our knowledge, who actually produce such a comprehensive fee report. And so this is not just a fee report, it is a total expense report of the plans. And I'm happy to present this on behalf of the two boards. And I'm going to, so our job is really to maximize after expense returns. But having said that, we do take our expenses and our fees very seriously. One of my former trustees used to say, the only free lunch in investing is low fees. And so we take that very seriously. We negotiate fees very hard. We choose passive investments where it is appropriate. And since I took over as CIO in 2018, we've made a, we made an effort to bring down fees, and I'm going to talk about that in a couple of minutes. So in terms of our expense ratio, we show, we show here not just our fees, but also our other expenses, such as expenses paid to our consultants, to our investment team, and other services that we utilize in the course of managing our plans. With that, I'm actually going to jump to this particular slide, slide five, which shows calendar year 2019 fees. And you can see the top half of the table has our total fees expense ratio, and the bottom half has salaries, investment staff, consultants, custodian, and other expenses. So our total expense ratio, which is management fees, operating fees, and incentive fees, is 109 basis points. And in a minute, I'll show you how it compared to prior years. And our, the expense of running it in the office is seven basis points. That includes staff salaries, consultant, custodian, and any fees that we pay to vendors in terms of data services and so on. And so as you can see, the dollar amount there, the management incentive and operating expenses, so the top half of the slide, that's column number four, it's $70 million, and that's what we paid in the year 2019, calendar year 2019. And the average assets were about $6.5 billion, which brought our expense ratio to 109 basis points. So on the next slide, I show two things, the total expense ratio and how it has changed over time, and the peer comparison on the right. And so since in the last three years, you can see, there's been a steady decline in the expense ratio. In 2017, it was 129 basis points, down to 113, and now to 109 basis points. And you can see that there's various colored bars that make up the 109 basis points, and I'll go into that in a little more detail a couple of slides later. But you can see, so these are calendar year fees, even though we report our returns on a fiscal year basis, we do collect fees on a calendar year basis. And so you can see the fees, and below that, you can see the calendar year return for 2019 was 14.1%. That's net of fees. The fees was 109 basis points. And to the right, you can see the peer comparison using the CAFR report. And you can see from this chart that we are somewhere in the middle of the pack, slightly better than middle. The CAFR is not a great comparison because it does not include incentive fees. It's only base fees, but that's the best available. And so we had some plans that they're included there that are similar in size. And you can see, obviously, the Calsters and the Calpers of the world have lower fees, and it's partly a function of their size and partly a function of the fact that, you know, some of their assets are managed in-house.
I'm sorry, which color are we?
We are the red.
Okay, thank you.
And the red, of course, is Dr. Signal Alarm. It just happened to be red in this PowerPoint presentation. And then this, this is an important slide, and I want to show this. So we talk about fees, the fact that our fees are, you know, 97, 98 basis points. So there's two components to it. There's the base fee, that's the management fee we pay, and then there's incentive fees. And that incentive fees is paid to two types of managers. One is hedge fund managers, and the others are private market managers. And so if they, if they cross a certain hurdle, they beat a benchmark, then they participate in that upside, and that's the incentive fees. And you can see the base fees were 65 basis points for Fed, 59 basis points for police and fire, combined is 61 basis points, and the incentive fees 37 basis points. So the incentive fees really, when our managers do well, that number goes up. When they don't do well, it'll tend towards closer to zero. The management fee is, of course, the fee that we can actually control. But before I get into the breakdown of the management fee, I just wanted to share this slide. How much of our assets are passively managed? I know this is of interest to council members, to many stakeholders. So we do manage our assets passively where we think that active management does not add value. And you can see from this chart, combined both, both plans, about 53% is active, 47% is passive. There's a slight difference between Federated and Police and Fire, and the reason for that is Police and Fire is further along in its implementation of our private market strategy, and Federated is somewhat behind. And so we use passive assets as a proxy for private markets. But roughly 47% of our assets are passive. And that's a high number compared to many of our peers. Orange County, actually, I just saw the report, they have a comprehensive fee report. They're around 36, 37%. Our passive asset mix, the weight, will actually go down a little bit. And the reason for that is that in private markets, we have a pacing plan, and it takes some time to implement that pacing plan, and whatever is not implemented in actually private markets is actually invested in a proxy. And that proxy is usually an index fund. And so you will see that go down a little bit going forward. And you can see our average passive allocation has increased over time, but I expect that at this point, we've probably topped out on the passive allocation, and it might even, as I mentioned, slightly drift below where we are as we implement our private market strategy. Now, this is an important slide that I wanted to share with you all. So 61 basis points, I showed this before, is the management fee, and the rest is incentive fee. And how does this break down? So two, two basis points of the total plan are paid to our passive managers, and 59 basis points are paid to our active managers. And how do, how does the 59 break down? And you can see this sort of ladder, step ladder chart here to the right. There's three categories of managers to whom we pay active fees. One is active managers. These are active long-only managers who buy stocks and bonds, and we pay them 15 basis points. We pay 16 basis points to hedge fund managers, who are both long and short the market. And we pay 28 basis points in management fees to our private managers, to our private equity managers. And so combined, when you combine the three categories, it comes to 59 basis points plus two basis points of passive. Now, I've really focused on this chart and on these categories the last two and a half years, and try to bring this down where possible. So the hedge fund, for example, the bar in the middle, 16 basis points, has actually come down because we made an act, an active decision to decrease our exposure to hedge funds. And so our hedge fund exposure a few years back was as high as 15%. In fact, for one of the plans, it was as high as 25%. And we brought it down three years ago to seven or eight percent, and now we've actually brought it down to 3%. And so some of this is 2019 fees. In 2020, we'll see a further reduction in fees in hedge funds. The other two buckets are pretty set. I would say it's hard to save money on either private assets or active managers because we still do use active management in areas like emerging markets, certain portions of fixed income, international equity, and so on. And so that's 15 basis points, and the private markets is 28 basis points. So I actually suspect that as we implement our private markets program, the 28 basis points will go up a little bit, while the 16 basis points in hedge funds will actually come down a little bit and sort of offset each other going forward. And so this has been sort of the trend in our fees. It's gone down over the last three years, a combined 15 basis points. Now, you see the projection is about the same next year or slightly higher. I wanted to be a little conservative there so that hopefully I can surprise on the upside. So we've sort of kept it, so we are going to save some fees in hedge funds, but we are going to pay a little bit more for our private managers. So expect that combined fee to be around the 60 basis point mark next year as well. So this, this last slide, one more slide I want to show you. The reason for showing you asset allocation is fees are in large part driven by asset allocation. It's not just hiring active versus passive managers. So you can see from this chart, both pension plans have a sizable allocation to private markets, 21% in the case of Federated, and 19% in the case of Police and Fire. And there's no passive substitute for private markets, unfortunately. And so we do have to employ active managers, and we pay, we end up paying a lot of fees for those, for those types of assets. And with that, Mr. Mayor, and I'm happy to take any questions on fees.
Great, thank you, Prabhu. And thanks to you and your team for a very extensive report. There's a lot of data here to both plans. We'll go to the public first, and we'll come back to council. This is on public comment on item 3.4. Larry Beekman?
Hi. You had a really nice public meeting about a Friday or two ago on this subject. It was really informative, and thank you for having it. At that meeting, the mayor spoke of, we are dealing with economy issues into next year that are going to be, you know, worrisome. There's, there's worries of foreclosure, there's worries of recession. And it made clear to myself at that meeting that, you know, we really have to count on, you know, the state funding patterns that they're developing out of the Heroes and Cares Act at this time. We have to be open to what it can work towards and accomplish and be accepting of it by next year, it sounds like. And, you know, we've had housing issues like AB 3088 that I've said here many times now. It's, it's left us a little short in areas. How do we be more open? You know, we have to be open to the reasoning at the state level, how they can develop finance patterns for the local level. And it just seems vital. And I'm very worried about, you know, I've been trying to speak politely that, you know, COVID numbers are growing in the past month. And, you know, I'm just starting to understand there are serious long-term plans that are not conducive to good health, and I'm worried about it. And we just have, I'm learning how to live with that. So, you know, good luck in our efforts, what we can work towards, and safe, good practices, and there can be a healthy economy ideas in, in the next year if we be open-minded to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vance Walker? Vance Walker? Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
We can hear you. If you'd like to speak.
Okay, I would like to shout out my name is RayTure.com, a public industry and in the heart of San Jose. And I would like to start by saying, the crown of Irish numbers is unacceptable. People have been partying since we just have been, they're not going to get any property.
Vance Walker, we're speaking on item 3.4, which is the comprehensive annual investment fee.
Oh, my bad, my bad, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Okay, so the topic has been members, like, it's unacceptable because all the people, especially the people at RayTure, are unacceptable about it. This includes demolishing the Jews.
The individual with the name Galaxy, welcome.
I like to say that we secure fucking.
Okay, anybody uttering any expletives will be cut off immediately. Jeremy Taylor?
I think that was the CIO who just gave that presentation, and that was awesome. What I'd like to call out is, we should take the presentation that we just saw and set that as the bar. And city staff, if you put in the effort that we just saw, we're going to see huge gains in San Jose. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex? Okay, Alex, you're going to need to upgrade your software. Apparently, it's not upgraded, so please go onto Zoom, download the latest version, and then we'll be able to hear you. Okay, returning to the council. Councilmember Vice Mayor Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Prabhu, for that presentation. As you probably, well, as you know, we've been hammering on the fees long before you got here. And I want to, I want to thank you, and I appreciate the trend line in terms of the fee reductions. But my biggest issue was not so much the fees, which I thought were high, but it was the fees based on what we were getting in terms of return. And we, I understand, and through the whole education process of the strategy of having a more conservative investment strategy to mitigate potential downside losses, but what that did is it constrained our upside potential. So my question to you is, with the new strategy, the new asset allocation, will we, will we be able to better align the returns that we're going to hopefully see with the fees that are charged?
Yeah, yeah, no, great question. You know, so unfortunately, so let me answer that, Vice Mayor, in two parts. So the first is, of course, I know you've been concerned about fees, the city council and stakeholders have been, and, and so we've done our best to at least pick the low-hanging fruit for now, and then we'll continue to sharpen our pencil. Fees are a function of asset allocation, and we are obligated to run a diversified portfolio, which means having, investing in a variety of asset classes and not just in a plain S&amp;P index, which causes, you know, expenses. But as you rightly pointed out, we have increased the growth exposure of the portfolio. And I've discussed this in two, in public forums before, and so that's really paid off handsomely in the last few months. It's hard to predict what the market's going to do in the next three months or six months or one year. But for, for many years, we've had a very conservative relative to our peers risk profile, and that's partly because of the maturity of our plans. But we do have a risk band that our risk consultant came up with, and we were at the lower end of the band. And the market meltdown during the pandemic gave us an opportunity to go to the high end of the band, and that's what we did. And so I feel very comfortable and confident with how our boards have aligned our plans and the exposure that we have to growth assets. We are going to see more volatility in the market, that's for certain, in the next few weeks and months. We may even have a recession coming in next year, and all of that may cause a little bit more pain than before because our growth assets profile is slightly higher. But in the long run, I sincerely believe that this is the right profile. And relative to fees, particularly to your question, I think we can produce returns that match our discount rate.
I appreciate that, and you described it perfectly. We're talking about the long run.
Yeah.
We are going to have dips in the market, we are, we are going to have recessions, we're going to have market volatility, but this is a long-term. But this is a long-term strategy, a long-term approach. And I just want to make sure that we have returns that at least match the market over the long term. That's, that's my goal and I hopefully is the goal of the, the fund.
And that is our goal as well. Absolutely.
All right. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to accept, accept the.
Second.
Thank you. I just had a couple additional questions. Probably thanks for all the information. Something popped out on, on your slides that also showed up in the report. And you go to page seven of the report, table five of the police and fire side. And I think this is true on both sides. You have all the other investment costs are described, was described as other investment costs. So it's staff salary benefits, consultants, custodian, et cetera. Then there's this category that is larger than all the others combined. It says total other costs. And that's two and a half million. What's a total other cost that's not one of those other things?
Yeah, no, that, that's a great question. And, and so that's actually part of management fees. And so in, in the institutional world, there's, there's the base management fee that we pay, there's the incentive fee, and they show a separate category. So when we, when they manage a fund for us on our behalf, there's auditing and accounting costs that go in and some other fiduciary and legal expenses for those funds, and that is shown as an other cost. So that's very, very much to be treated as a manager expense.
I see. Okay, thank you. And I know this would be difficult to do for any one year, and so it probably require many, a view at multiple years. I appreciate what you've said about the fact that its asset allocation rate drives fees fundamentally. So that being said, I'm grateful that the fee ratios have dropped over time. I think that's positive and I know we've had a lot of conversations about that. But, but obviously we pay a fee because we're expecting to get something. And as I understand, in just very broad simplistic terms, we're either hoping that we're going to get a manager who's going to beat the market, you know, give us alpha, or we're going to find a manager that's going to reduce risk and reduce our beta. And whether it's an alpha or a beta, it seems to me that over the long run, we should be able to look at our fees and say, these fees are doing a good job for us in getting us what we want or not as good a job, and we could actually compare across asset classes. Do we do anything like that now?
Yes. So this is something that we've started doing for the past, I would say, 16 to 18 months. So we do produce a quarterly report to the board and we show multiple benchmarks there. So obviously there's, we show the return net of fees of the plans. And then we compare it to the policy benchmark and the investable policy benchmark. Let's have our active managers added value or not. We also look at a straight passive alternative. So had we been in the same asset classes like emerging markets and, you know, core fixed income and so on, had we not employed any active managers, what would the returns have been?
Okay.
That's a benchmark. And the third benchmark that we show is the 6040. So if we not, if we don't do anything fancy, but just 6040, global 60 and global fixed income 40, what would the turns be? And the last benchmark is we called, what we call as a liability benchmark portfolio, which we don't follow because I think that's more for plans that are 100% funded. Then you can really immunize your entire portfolio. If we had a portfolio like that, what would our returns be? So we've started tracking that, Mr. Mayor, and, you know. So that, that will actually tell us, you know, obviously one or two years is, is not a long enough timeframe. But over a three or five year period, we can say, look, is this program actually adding value or not? And should we persist with this? Yeah.
So you started doing that a couple of years ago, is that right?
Yeah, I would say about the, this, this framework was approved about 18 months ago.
Okay, great. So now the board can transparently see whether we're really getting value added from managers and compare that to what we're paying.
That's right.
Okay, that's great. I know that this is complex stuff. I just, you know, I appreciate the fact and I know that trustee Sincera is with us. Appreciate the fact the board is paying attention to this and that we're trying to understand, really, are we getting our money's worth out of $70 million in fees because that is our retirees' money. So, but thank you for all that. All right, any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll vote then on the motion from Vice Mayor Jones.
Menas?
Yes.
Paralas? Paralas?
Sorry, aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Barza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Camus?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Lecardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, gentlemen. We'll move forward. We're going to pass up the redistricting commission, that will be heard at 6:00 PM. It's indicated in the agenda. Item 3.6 is approval issuance tax exempt multi-family housing revenue notes for Page Street Studios. And Councilmember Davis District.
Move approval.
Second, okay. I don't see any members of the public who'd like to speak on the summary on the approval issuance of tax exempt multi-family housing revenue on item 3.6. So we will vote.
Menas?
Yes.
Paralas?
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Barza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Camus?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Lecardo?
Aye. Okay, we have on item 3.7, another affordable housing project, this one in Councilman Carrasco's district, issuance of tax exempt multi-family housing revenue notes and loans for financing of Alum Rock family housing.
Move approval.
Second. The motion, Councilmember Foley, second to Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I couldn't unmute, but thank you so much for moving that.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
It's okay. If I could just say a few words, Mayor.
Sure.
Of course, we're looking forward to this development and I hope that my colleagues will see the benefit of it. In this day and time where, where we're facing one of the worst housing crises. Of course, this development is, is one that, that is much needed, welcomed. And, and I don't know if Rachel wants to say anything, if it's even needed at this point, but I'll give her the floor. But of course, as the council member, I'm highly supportive of it. Thank you, Councilmember Foley, for moving that.
Okay, Rachel, do you want to snatch the feet from the jaws of victory?
Um, no, I just appreciate the support for this project and we're here. We have the finance team and the housing team, we're here to answer questions, but we, we really appreciate all of your support.
Thank you. Mr. Beakman?
Thanks for noticing my hand. I was a little late getting to the item and you were about to pass it up and councilperson Carrasco needed to speak about it. So thanks for seeing me and I hope you can, you can see me again if my hand goes up a little slow sometimes. Thank you. Um, for this item, I just wanted to quickly thank yourselves for, you had a pretty interesting item on your CED committee meeting agenda yesterday, the last two items about affordable housing and housing issues in general, that you're really trying to address in the next year. What will be, you know, the future of affordable housing and what, what can that look like? And you're going to be asking for community input, isn't that's important? I thank you for that. And it sounds like, you know, you're off to a good start and I, I can't emphasize enough, you know, that, you know, there's good practices, interesting practices going around the, the entire South Bay at this time. I think I've mentioned a few times now. And, you know, with, with all of that, it's, it's good, good ideas from the government. If they can simply be receptive and, and hearing the, their, their community and the everyday public about the issues of, you know, affordable housing, you know, that's important. So good luck. You know my feelings about extremely low, very low and mixed income housing, how important that can be at this time. So good luck in how, in how you will be addressing these issues and thank you for this item.
Thank you. All right, back to the council, Councilmember Foley.
Mayor, I see a lot of hands up. I don't know if it's for this item.
No, we're, we're having issues with folks are Zoom bombing and so we're monitoring that. Councilmember Foley, get your hand up.
Yeah, just briefly, Councilmember Carrasco, I'm so sorry, I jumped in and made that motion. I should have waited for you to do that. I just wanted to apologize publicly to you for that. No, no worries. I was struggling with my, I'm struggling, I'm having difficulties with my computer. I have been for the past couple of weeks, but I'm perfectly fine with it as long as I get everybody's support.
Okay, JT? Welcome.
Thanks. This is really smart and I just think that you guys should go do more of it in every district. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, back to the council and thank you, Councilmember Carrasco and Councilmember Davis for welcoming and supporting this affordable housing in your districts. Thanks to the Housing Department for all your hard work. Let's vote.
Menas?
Yes.
Paralas?
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Barza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Camus?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Aye. All right, item 4.1 are the fireworks ordinance work plans status updates. We have a presentation. Much, Tivustrada?
Thank you, Mayor. And do we have the presentation? I don't see it. We had a submitted presentation, Mayor. Is that available?
So Hector, typically you would be sharing your screen. If yours, if we haven't made that provision, I might ask either Gloria or Tony to attempt to share their screen with the presentation on it.
All right, one second, I have it right here. And I apologize.
No problem.
Okay, can you see that?
Yeah, thank you, Hector.
Once again, I apologize. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank the mayor, city council and members of the community for this opportunity to deliver the fireworks ordinance work plan status update. I am Deputy Chief Hector Estrada of San Jose Fire Department. And also presenting will be Captain Michael Kim from San Jose Police Department. The presentation covers the Fourth of July reporting period that spanned from June 1st through July 12th. The 2020 fireworks ordinance work plan status report is available on the City of San Jose's website or via link on the city council's agenda dated September 15th and once again today, October 27th. I will present the highlights and share the data, what the data has revealed, review new activities introduced in 2020 and along with that, the lessons learned and next steps. And we will respond to any question you may have after the presentation. So in 2020, it was much different than previous years in several ways. With COVID-19, the county ordered a shelter in place and other issues. They coalesced to create a very different environment to produce an education and messaging campaign around fireworks use. Works activity and related fires increased. The, this increase was observed in cities throughout the nation. Furthermore, the volume and types of illegal fireworks in the community suggested a concerted effort to market directly to the community. We will, we concluded our fourth year and despite the challenges, we have made some progress in the areas of outreach and reporting. So I'll review the program components and those are education and outreach, which focuses on awareness, reporting, the effort to improve the data quality and increase the ease in reporting and enforcement, which continues to be the most difficult and an area in which cities across the nation also struggle. The goals were to reduce injuries and fires, to decrease illegal fireworks activity. And to increase the number of actionable, actionable reports. We added to increase awareness of potential fines this year, so we wanted to make sure people knew what the consequences were. The team's intent was to reach as many people as possible through multimedia and continue on the momentum that had been achieved from recent years. And we plan to take what had been achieved under the previous Fed Up with Fireworks campaign and expand on it. In 2020, we were presented with limitations to previously used outreach avenues. With, with fewer established outreach channels available, a pivot to enhance data-driven messaging campaigns through targeted social media was initiated. This resulted in more precise paid advertising decisions and utilized established community neighborhood networks. We also responded to some of the previous year's presentations requests that came from council, PISFIS and also neighborhood, neighborhood commissions. And some of those consisted of establishing or creating new videos for public education, how to use and how to find the online reporting tool. Those were available, English, Spanish and Vietnamese. We also expanded the stakeholder outreach. And we increased public safety presence in areas where we had current and/or historically high illegal fireworks use. So, and most recently, we did on October 14th, the fireworks team that consisted of representative from police department, fire and code enforcement presented to the, the fireworks ordinance work plan status to the Neighborhoods Commission. Unfortunately, there was not a quorum and no action could be taken by the commission at that time. But to summarize, the following outcomes and highlights were reported to that commission. The number of online reports tripled. We had 335 actionable reports of that. We had 331 written warnings that were sent to addresses that we had reported some fireworks use with sufficient information. We also found that there was an unprecedented amount of fireworks use and increasing calls for service through 911 and other channels. We had 54 related fires to fireworks and that's an increase. Last year, we had 15. On the highlight side, we were able to use data and we increased and were more effective with outreach and our community contacts. And some of the outcomes were that our webpage views increased over 300%. Our VTA and combined digital billboard ads garnered over 5 million impressions. And our click-through rates, online ads went up over 500%. So, but one of the things that we were able to also do was increase the neighborhood presence by police and fire. So on the fire side, we had crews driving through neighborhoods for increased, increased visibility. And PD had on-duty police patrols that, that patrol neighborhoods where we had frequent and, and recent fireworks use. Some of the other things that were accomplished came in the, the public information manager for fire conducted over 15 media interviews. And that was through T R calls this season. The data that we collected this year was also provided to PD and they were able to follow up on those most frequent sites or addresses that had reports of fireworks use. They were able to actually visit addresses and spoke with residents on occasion. So with that, our lessons learned, some of them are very, are similar to those lessons that we have learned in the past. And we focus a bit more on with no or insufficient information and more police presence. And we, we hear that in public outreach and education. Behavioral changes in the community requires effective and timely messaging. We learned that a consistent message to a broader audience can be achieved by using community partners. We also learned that it is possible to increase the reach of a targeted social media campaign and reduce the cost through previously captured data. So we're going to do that and actionable. We also learned that it is possible to increase the reach of a targeted social media campaign and reduce the cost through previously captured data, so we're going to do that, and actionable reporting results. So this year, a significant amount of data was collected, and it would be erroneous to attribute the amount of illegal fireworks activity solely to the lack of public outreach or inaction on the part of government agencies. The reporting tool collected data to support 5% actionable reports. And due to safety concerns, the transient nature and the transient nature of the violations, obtaining evidence to issue warning notices or citations is often difficult to achieve, so there's work to be done there for sure. Consequences, citations as a deterrent may be ineffective, and we found that this may be due to limited enforcement and the reception of low fines amounts, so we'll be investigating that, and that brings us to our next steps. So, under the areas of education and outreach, we will refine and refresh our messaging campaign to capture broad community interest and compel safe celebrations, and in light of COVID and/or alternative activity options for the communities, that's where we'll be doing some of that focused work. Providing public education, and that is the how-to for the reporting tool of illegal fireworks and on the city's illegal fireworks abatement activities. So these may work in conjunction with some of the work under the reporting to evaluate and improve the reporting tool. And this is to increase the number of actionable reports, to decrease insufficient or incomplete reports. And this may include examination of what has been reported and determine possible changes to the tool and explore potential integration with the My San Jose app. We will perform comparative analysis of illegal fine amounts across the Bay Area and compare those to other California cities to address consequences, and engage regional partners to leverage illegal fireworks mitigation resources and programs, and those will affect and include our regional partners. I'm going to hand it over to Captain Kim, who will speak to the enforcement.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, City Manager's Office. My name is Mike Kim from the Police Department. So this year, all our resources were dedicated to priority one and priority two calls. We were fortunate leading up to Fourth of July to get at least 450 pounds of fireworks that we were able to seize through at least three arrests, which we were fortunate. Although there were no large sanctioned fireworks events this year, our Patrol Division ended up going to over 2,000 related calls for service compared to 464 last year, so we were quite busy. We did utilize on-duty patrol to be visual as possible, driving through the neighborhoods, including the parks. However, due to shifting priorities in the Police Department and the reduction of the 2021 overtime budget, no overtime was authorized this year for extra officers to work. We did participate in advertising as much as we can through social media, Nextdoor, and online. We hung up banners that said Fed Up With Fireworks and also Stop Illegal Fireworks. And the last thing, just of note, there was no permitted firework block party permits issued this year due to COVID. And then the very last thing I just want to emphasize is on July 4th, there were significant events that the patrol officers did respond to. We had a plane crash, a small plane crash over by Reed Hillview Park that took up a lot of resources. We did have a missing person in Elam Rock that took us about four or five hours to look for. And the last two major events is we had a large party at Cahalan Park in the evening that had over 200 subjects, lording and partying that took up significant resources. There was a large party resulting in a fight in Alviso this year, and the very last thing is while officers were having a team meeting near Reed Hillview Airport, an actual round went through one of our patrol officers that took up some resource, so we were quite busy on top of that, and I'm open for questions.
Thank you very much.
With that, I'd like to just acknowledge some of the other members that were of the team that were essential in working on this campaign this year. We have Erica Ray, who's the Public Information Manager for San Jose Fire, Rachel Roberts, the Deputy Director of Code Enforcement. Part of her staff in Code Enforcement is Maria Diaz Perez, Oscar Carrillo, and Jason Gipolisco, who processed all of those reports. And in City Manager's Office, Trevor Gold and Ali Rico. So with that, we are prepared to take any questions, and thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jeremy? Welcome.
I'm not, I'm not quite sure what's being celebrated. The performance on Fourth of July was abysmal, and the dig I heard at no overtime. To me, that's like an adult temper tantrum. You guys didn't get your overtime, so you did nothing. Instead of focusing though on what went wrong, here's an idea for next year. So you just referenced these large parties where there were fights. We know where there were fires. Why don't you start patrolling those exact areas July 3rd, so everybody knows that what's coming? And on the Fourth of July, have someone park there. Yes, you'll get calls to other places, but while your officers are not on calls, they could be parked there. If you actually show a show of force, I guarantee good results. Thank you.
Thank you. Tina?
Hi, this is Tina Morrell. I hope you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
For your time. Okay, so in my opinion, July 4th this year was another epic fail. This time it was even worse. And here's the deal is we need some different solutions because trying to wrap ourselves into pretzels, getting the community to do reporting that is never adequate enough. It's not working. And so how about we use drone technology? You know, the use of drones is more accepted now. I wrote to the mayor and to the council and gave a link to an article about it. How about we, you know, go online, try to scope out where some of the large sales are, do some busts, and this is really important. Publicize the busts. So that 450 pounds of fireworks that was confiscated, that's great, but I didn't see it anywhere. And I didn't see it anywhere like immediately after, you know, around the Fourth of July, so maybe the timing on it could be improved as well. Something really needs to be done. I know the community is trying to use this reporting tool. It really doesn't seem to be working. So my hope is, is that you will allocate the overtime necessary and you start enforcing, however that looks. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Roland?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your earlier kind comment. Yeah, the reason I raised my hand is because of my personal experience, and back in my park days, what I did was actually climb up in the park and have a look around, and it's something the police cannot do because they're underground. They don't know where the activity is. And once you are in this pose, you can see exactly what's going on. You can see where the fireworks are coming from. And my, the reason I actually called the police is because some of there were way too close to the park. They were about to set the park on fire. What I observed in two hours is actually four houses going up in flames, and to situate you on the, yeah, I don't remember any wasp. There was a 50-acre fire on the other side of 101 in the Evergreen area. So I just put that out there as a suggestion to potentially improve what we're doing right now. Thank you.
Robert Bender?
Hi, I think this enforcement against fireworks is un-American, and I think fireworks are a part of the Fourth of July. And even though they're illegal, there's too much fun, and you guys shouldn't, shouldn't be enforcing this. They're so much fun. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, returning to council. Thank you for the presentation and appreciate the comments from members of the community, and particularly Tina Morrell. Your ideas actually were anticipated, I think, by the memorandum from councilmembers Davis, Vice Mayor Jones, and Councilmember Martinez about drones, and certainly appreciate all the concerns we've heard from many members of the community. This is something I think every city in the country is struggling mightily with, and I don't think anyone's found the solution. But there's no reason why we shouldn't keep pushing and keep trying different things because we know it's, it's, it's not yet working. So I had a question about the 335 actionable reports. Out of that, we got only 161 warnings. Is that because 335 actual reports related to only 161 incidents?
The 161, Mayor, is actually last year's number, so it was show an increase. So that was 335, there were 331 warnings and four citations.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misread that then. Thank you. So of those, I understand there are only five citations. So can you help me understand why the gap between the actionable, what we thought were actionable reports? And of those 330 did not quite get to the level of citation. They only got to warnings. Why is that?
So I can answer this, Hector, if you'd like.
Please.
Thank you.
So Mayor, Rachel Roberts, Deputy Director of Code Enforcement. So the difference between when we can issue a warning notice and when we can issue a citation comes down to the two things, evidence and the willingness of the reporting party to testify. Because we are relying on evidence from a member of the public, they have to be willing to testify should that citation be appealed or even go as far as to be brought before a court. So of the 335 that we received, there was sufficient evidence to warrant a warning letter, and usually those have a correct address and description, but they don't actually have a photo or video, so we can't move to a citation. And then those that do have photo or photographic or video evidence, we can issue a citation, but we then have to follow up with the reporting party to ensure they're willing to testify, should it come to that. So we actually could have had 12 citations this year, but there were seven folks who were not willing to testify.
Sorry, we could have had how many if we, if we had people willing to?
12.
Okay, so there were only 12 of these actionable reports that contain sufficient video or photos?
That's correct.
Out of 335. And maybe this is a question for Nora, but is there a reason why we require there to be video or photos for citations?
It would be the necessary evidence. If someone is willing to testify, and you have a, if they're willing to testify, video helps, but it's not, it's not mandatory, but if they, if it's a he-she, they say that person was using fireworks, and the person denies it, the video is helpful. That's, that's the real reason.
So I can appreciate that, but this is a, this is a preponderance of the evidence standard. Is that right? For citations?
Citation would be quasi-criminal, so it's higher than that.
Okay, so it's clear and convincing evidence?
Yes.
Okay, but certainly, you know, I know I've had dozens of trials where I had no video or photograph evidence, and we convicted defendants on proof beyond a reasonable doubt, which is a very high standard, right? Much higher. And so I guess I'm just wondering why we're creating these barriers for ourselves in the issuance of citations. Most of us who get parking tickets pay them. I understand that you might need to go find a witness to testify if someone wants to challenge it, but why wouldn't we at least want to issue the citation? And then if they want to challenge it, then we either get, we either have a witness or we don't. But to not issue citations, obviously, the purpose.
That's not a standard our office has necessarily set up, so Rachel may have.
Yeah, so I guess. I just don't understand why we're creating these barriers for ourselves. Rachel, you're muted right now.
Sorry about that. So that was just in consult with our attorneys previously that we were, it made sense to follow that protocol at the time, but we can revisit that.
Well, we've had a very conservative protocol that's ensured that virtually nobody gets a citation, and I just think it's probably time for us to think differently, because obviously it's not working. And, you know, we have community members who are, you know, neighborhood leaders have been engaged in this for many years, and they're saying, hey, guys, no one thinks this is working. I'd certainly like to see us try a different approach. I understand the desire for video or photos, but I can tell you, when I was on the website, I certainly didn't see anything that says, you better issue a, give us video or photo, or else we're not going to issue a citation. So I'm not sure we're clearly communicating that to people who are reporting. And, you know, I think it may be different if we go back to folks, you know, we may get a different answer from people about their willingness to testify based on whether or not someone's interested in challenging the citation. They may be upset to hear that someone's unwilling to accept a citation for something they did wrong, and it's in their neighborhood and they're frustrated about it, maybe they'd be more willing to testify if they heard it, so.
Sure, Mayor, and if that was, if that was the, the advice that had been previously provided, we're happy to revisit that. That's, that's certainly from the attorney's viewpoint, that's best case if we get challenged. But I understand that, that the concern is lesser than that, and in getting the citations issued and starting that process, it may be more important. So we can revisit that.
Okay, I appreciate you taking another look, because, you know, I don't think our goal is to have 100% winning record at trial on these cases versus, you know, really trying to deter the conduct. Then I guess question about the, the reporting tool itself. I know we've got a memo out, Councilmember Prowlus and I, about trying to integrate this, and I appreciate I've had some prior conversation with Kip Harkness. Kip has really suggested, hey, let's all come back with a set of potential additions to the 311 reporting tool and decide what we really think is most important as a council. I think that makes sense, because I know we have limited bandwidth, but it's clear that, to me at least, that this really should be part of the 311 reporting tool. I guess, question I have about the form that we have, you know, when we went and tested 311 and first started the iterations of that tool for reporting things like graffiti and and trash dumping and things like that, we had a lot of user-based design testing. We got people into a room, or we, we, we had, you know, the frequent customers, those neighborhood leaders who care passionately about this stuff on a phone telling us, this works, this doesn't, or I didn't understand this, or I didn't understand that. Are we doing that at all with this form? That is asking people whether or not.
We, we have in initiating the conversation to see if there was an opportunity to transition over, we, we have not gotten that far yet. So in terms of what it is that we are looking at in, in the data and trying to establish, okay, what is it that people are trying to achieve? That's some of the conversation that we've had, trying to focus and target what our requirements would be in order to make this a better tool.
Okay, great, because, you know, like I say, if it's really, I don't, you know, if we're really adamant that we absolutely need photographic evidence, that just doesn't come through. When you go through the first, you know, I know in the report, it indicated that I think a majority of folks were not aware on this iteration that there was not going to be immediate response. And I see that we have a checkbox approach on step one, acknowledgement. I'm guessing a lot of people probably check that in, out of irritation, and then go on to the next page where they think they're actually going to report something. And I'm not sure the language here, even around the partial information, is something that is going to clearly convey to people, hey, if this is incomplete, we're not going to be able to actually issue a citation. So anyway, I think it would be helpful for us to have that engagement with folks, so we can really get reports that are actionable and hopefully end up in citations. And then I know we've been using the same messaging for the last three years, according to the report, and the messaging is around Fed Up With Fireworks, and it's not. And the messaging is around fed up with fireworks and it's not worth it. And is it, what makes us believe that those messages specifically have any effect on behavior? Are, are we looking at any behavioral insights in other cities? Studies, any, is there any information or evidence that's sort of guiding us on what our messaging should be?
The team spoke about that very subject recently. And I could probably, if I could ask Rachel to provide a little bit of context, because we, we did specifically talk about revisiting the messaging. And as where we are now and how we can evolve in order to really hit those key targets.
Yeah, Mayor, I, I was on the team about two, three years ago with Rachel and we did hire that consulting company that helped this brand, that new messaging. We did pre-meet with Rachel and Hector and we thought about possibly maybe exploring the idea of maybe re-hiring a new company to look at that behavior type messaging and see if there's something better out there, being that it's now three years. So definitely, I think it's a great consideration that we should look at.
Rachel, I saw your light go on. Did you want to jump in?
Um, yeah, I was just gonna say it's correct what Captain Kim shared, but also that we think it would really also be of benefit to help us with the cultural competency piece, make sure we're reaching the right folks.
Okay. I appreciate you taking another look at it. The reason why I'm focused on the messaging so much is, you know, from going way back to the, the dinosaur ages when I was in grad school, we were studying, you know, criminal justice and what deters behavior. It seemed pretty well settled that telling people that something is bad does not deter criminal behavior. And, and telling them that it's not worth it or whatever, the messages that seem to have the greatest deterrent was that the sanction that could be applied would be both swift and certain. Not even that it'd be severe, not the severity of sanction, it wouldn't be the amount of time you serve or the amount you find you pay. It'd just be the fact that you could get caught. And for that reason, I would be really interested in messages. I'd be interested in knowing whether or not messages that really focus on helping the community understand how they can best report folks that will result in actual citations could be really effective messaging, both because it helps inform the community that wants to report. But most importantly, because it is a signal to the 17-year-old who's out there that there are thousands of people in my community are learning how to report me. And there may not be enough cops in this city to be able to go arrest folks, but Lord knows there's enough upset neighbors who are ticked off about the fact that I'm lighting this stuff off in front of their house. And, and that could be a, you know, a message that might be a greater deterrent to the effect, to the extent that people are increasingly aware that others in the community are watching and are going to be more enabled to report them. So anyway, I'd just be interested in, in knowing if that's a potential path. And then finally, Mike, on, on the issue of the seizures, grateful that you guys had those three arrests and the 450 pounds seized. I know that, you know, going out and trying to arrest people or lighting off fireworks is like chasing ghosts. So the stuff isn't easy. But, you know, the, the question that Tina raised, Tina Morrow, about when that we announced it, did we go to the media at all on those seizures?
I don't think we did at the time, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I know that one of the years, and it was like three years ago, we had a big arrest, a, a pretty big cache. And, and then we, or cache, however it's pronounced, I don't know. Anyway, and, and we, we, we actually went to the media and it was in advance of the 4th of July, which I thought was great. It was like two weeks in advance. And I thought that was great messaging from PR standpoint to tell folks that there are folks getting arrested. And, and that was just something I would love to see. I, I noticed that there are multiple ideas out there on the table. I'm supportive of looking at several of them. I appreciate the memorandum from my colleagues about exploring drones. I know there's some limitations on nighttime use that we probably need to deal with, with regard to when that those drones. I think they all need to be within the line of sight of the officers. I, I know that there are suggestions around, you know, getting the police overtime back out there. I, I would just suggest an item four from that memorandum from councilmembers Jimenez and Davis and Vice Mayor that those funding decisions obviously would go into the, the budget process because I think we're all recognizing that SANS AP is going to be heavily stressed this year and we're all going to need to focus our resources. So I appreciate good ideas and all the memoranda and the efforts of staff to take a, a second look here to see how we can continue to improve. And I also look forward maybe to coming back and seeing how we can integrate all this 311 reporting app. So thank you for putting up with all my questions. Councilmember Jimenez.
Well, Mayor, thank you so much. You didn't leave many questions for me to ask, but but I think a, a good line of questioning, very much appreciated. And I'm very supportive of, I think you touched on the reevaluation of the protocol for issuance of citations, which I think is important. So I, I'd be happy to add that as, you know, in, in the list of things that we've put out there. I also just want to thank the, certainly the, the fire department, Chief Estrada, city administration, the police department, but especially a lot of the residents that have remained engaged on this topic over the course of many years. And I, I can understand their frustration, but, and I think they recognize the, the fact that this is, this is important to them, important to many of us, obviously, as their representatives. But the city's do, dealing with a lot. And so as we gone, went, went down the road of soliciting some community input and suggestions that, that helped sort of develop the memo we put out there. We were trying to integrate some of the, some of what was expressed to us from the many community groups. And, and this is, you know, the fireworks issue is one of those issues that has really brought together residents from around the city like I think not tons of issues do. And, and so we've had residents from District Two, District Six, District Three, just all over the city that have really chimed in. And I think to a certain extent have helped to inform the memorandum that we put forward. And so, and very supportive of the fact that you and Councilmember Peralas, Mayor, put forward a memorandum as well, supportive of that. The, the only thing I would say about ours is if you look at item 3B, that's engaging with neighboring cities such as Morgan Hill and Gilroy. Just wanted to emphasize that when we put that out there, it's certainly under, with the understanding that we don't have a way to, to require these other cities to, to alter their policies or the way they approach things. And, and I also recognize, and I think many of the residents recognize, that many of these cities actually, these safe and sane fireworks and these, these stands that you see throughout their cities are really there to offer opportunities for nonprofit groups to try to raise money, whether it's Little Leagues, whether it's Pop Warner's and things of that nature. And so, and, and the other thing we would, I, I think all acknowledge is that those fireworks tend to be a little different from the, from the ones we see shooting in the air that are distinctly different. I also think that it's important to point out the fact that this discussion of fireworks, I, I think it's going to take some time before we solve it if, if it's at all solvable. But I think with this new, the new challenges we have around fire danger or the continued challenge we have around fire danger and, and things of that nature, especially in our districts that, that are up against the more rural parts of our, of our city, say District Eight, District Ten, District Two. And the like, I think that's why this is even more important to really take on and, and start moving forward, even if it's, if, even if it is incrementally, just showing folks that we care enough to sort of start asking some of these questions and, and start nudging us forward, even if it is a little at a time. So with that, let me just move forward, the, both the memorandum for Mayor Licardo and Councilmember Peralas, along with the memorandum drafted by me and my colleagues, Councilmember Davis and Vice Mayor Jones. In addition to adding the, the, to the direction what you had questioned about, Mayor, the reevaluation of the protocol for issuance of citations. I think that's a worthwhile effort that we need to look at. We make these rules and I certainly don't want to be making it more difficult for us to enforce some of the, what the residents are concerned about. So with that being said, I'll move that.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, motion, Councilmember Jimenez, and someone got the second, Tony will tell us. Councilmember Foley.
Thank you. Much of what I was going to say has already been said by you and Councilmember Jimenez. And I appreciate the direction we're going, but the solution to this, I don't feel, is education. We have an education program out there, the it's not worth it, it clearly not working. The, the, the people who are concerned about fires and, and things like that, they're not the ones who are using these illegal fireworks. And I don't know about you, but in our neighborhoods, this, this was not just happening on July 4th. This year, it seemed that fireworks were dominant for almost, it seemed like all the month of July, but it could have been the week before and the week after. It just seemed on and on and on every day. I don't have pets, but I hear from friends who have pets how it's very disturbing to them. I hear from veterans how it's very disturbing to veterans. I hear, of course, the risk to fires and injuries that result from fireworks. So the system that we have clearly isn't working. I appreciate the two memos and I support both of them. And, and thank you, Councilmember Jimenez, for adding in, taking a look at how we are enforcing this. Because asking neighbors to testify against neighbor, neighbors is a little problematic. If we're, we don't want to set them up to have major arguments in a neighborhood if they can just anonymously present. And if there's a different way of doing it and enforcing the law, then, then let's do that. I just want to also give a little concern to our school facilities. When I was on the school board, there's one school in particular that used to host and still does tremendous fireworks display. The school didn't for, it didn't host it, the neighbors hosted it. And several times I reported it to police, the police department. This was way before you had this protocol in place. I was a school board member. And I was told no manpower existed to find out who was in charge of the illegal fireworks. Well, I found out who it was and I reported it, but it didn't go anywhere. Maybe I could take it offline as to who it was and where it was, but Councilmember Davis probably knows what school I'm talking about. But it's, it's a high risk to the schools because these schools, they, they're using the fields, they're open fields. It's a great place to be letting off fireworks. And then the next day they have daycares operating out of there. Of course, we're in COVID, it's a little bit different right now. But we've got YMCA's and other daycare facilities operating on the next day after these fireworks are let off, finding fireworks that have not been cleared off and have not been exploded. So it's a very dangerous situation for our kids the next day. It's very dangerous for our community. It's dangerous for our schools. We really need to get a handle on it. And I don't think the messaging, the messaging isn't working, but I really don't want to spend a lot of money on a consultant creating a new message. I think maybe a handful of really crafty community members, maybe Teeny Moral, because she's very creative that way, could help us come up with some language that would be more impactful. But that isn't the problem. It's enforcement. Get a ticket, be fined. That's the problem. And if you're a minor and you're fined, your parents have to pay the fine. So we just need to look at this a little more diff, differently. And we need to impose the law that we already have in place and not depend on our neighbors to have to testify, putting them in a situation where they may already have a negative relationship or a difficult relationship with the neighbor, putting, setting off the fireworks. That's just my two cents. I'll leave it at that, but I'm happy to support the two memos and the addition from Councilmember Jimenez. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. I, I got many Facebook messages and texts on July 3rd and July 4th in the evening. And that's why, why I signed on to this memo. I, I completely agree with all the previous comments. We absolutely need to enforce. Having more citations, I think, is going to be crucial. I think it's really important, as, as Councilmember Foley stated, you know, we know where the big fireworks get lit off. I bet every single one of us council members could say which places have, you know, are, are gathering spaces for those big displays. And they're the ones that cause the most consternation for our veterans and our pets. And frankly, I think the message has to be about vets and pets, not about it's not worth it. I think those are, it's a more compelling message for people to remind them to have some empathy during this time. And, and I, I completely agree. I don't want to spend money on a consultant. I'd much rather spend it on, on overtime and enforcement and, and citing first and asking questions later, frankly, and confiscating. I think those are all really important. I do have one question for Captain Kim. Was the helicopter in use on that evening and what was it used for?
I don't know if it was up in there that day, Councilwoman. I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I, I can, I agree with, I think Roland was the public commenter who said, you know, we can see a lot more from higher up and, and that's why we put the drones in there. And I don't know, you know, it does sound like there were a lot of events that, that evening that, that took time away from, from PD. And I understand that. I just, having fifth, what was it, 54 fires in 40, 40 days? I, I would much rather be making citations than putting out literal fires. I just think that's a better use of our, our time and better for our environment and better for everybody involved. So I just, uh, I hope that we can come up with something before the new year that will will have the new year be a much quieter and more delightful time to ring in the holiday as opposed to noisy and stressful for, for some of our community members, for our furry friends and, and frankly, for, for those of us who care to sleep in the evening as opposed to being constantly being prevented from doing so from the, from the loud noises. So that's, that's why I signed on to the memo. I'm supportive of both, both of memos. And I really hope that we will be able to, to figure out a way to, whether it's have, have code enforcement also be allowed to make citations that, that evening and have overtime in, in code enforcement as well? How much more with the, with the community service officers, maybe? Just how many more people can we put on to this like task force for, for those, for that holiday? I think, you know, we have a, we have maybe three holidays that I can think of where we have fireworks in, in our city. And having that, having that group be, be deputized on those around those holidays to, to make those citations and really make it not worth it, as opposed to just saying it's not worth it. But then we really only do not even half a dozen citations. I, I just think, you know, it's not believable. They, they know they're not going to get caught. So we have to, we have to put some teeth behind it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Peralas.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And appreciate the, the comments from my colleagues as well and the, the presentation. I think I'll, I'll highlight the, the positive parts first, because I think this is certainly an item where, you know, there's a lot to critique, unfortunately. But positively, I think, you know, seeing the increase, we, we had over 6,600, just 6,601 reports submitted online. As pointed out, was it, was tripling from the year prior. And then 335 actionable, which, which doubled from the year prior. I, I think unfortunately, the, the, the sort of the positives kind of stopped there, but I'll, I'll, I'll highlight on that on why that's important. The, the tool, obviously, the ability to report online is, is making its way out there. And community members are using it. It's increasingly being used. And the actionable reports are, are going up, which is, is, and on the same kind of ratio right now. But I think that, that gives us, it should give us some, some bit of encouragement that, you know, we're sort of, we're on the right path. The, the, the major piece of it that we're all sort of talking about here now is, is in order to really change the habit of these individuals, you know, clearly other things we're doing are not working. I think, you know, the, the campaign, the publicity campaigns trying to deter it, you know, we, we had, I think, higher hopes in regards to if we can put some marketing out there to discourage the use of, of illegal fireworks. had, I think, higher hopes, uh, in regards to if we can put some marketing out there, um, to discourage the use of, of illegal fireworks. Um, that we could hopefully shift some, uh, some hearts and minds. I think the mayor pointed that out. Well, uh, that's just not working. Individuals that, that, um, are going to be doing this, uh, use of illegal fireworks, uh, at least maybe the majority of them, um, are not swayed by, by that, that marketing. Um, so I would agree that, 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 uh, you know, since that's not working, uh, we should not be investing in that regard moving forward. Um, instead, uh, take the lessons learned and, and see how we can't maybe invest more, uh, into getting publicity around the tool. And, uh, potentially even, um, some on the spot publicity on, uh, maybe arrests or citations that are made. As was pointed out, I think, uh, well by, by Tina Moral, um, and, uh, and try to, to get that information out there to the community. Um, but most important, I think, is really just obviously the ability to cite more individuals because that's really what's going to shift. Uh, it's not going to shift hearts and minds, but hopefully it'll shift actions, uh, simply because somebody's getting a hefty fine. And we know that, that, um, that can work. Certainly that dissuades people. Um, you know, from violating our parking regulations, parking in red zones. Uh, it's not that it completely stops it as we know. Uh, but for the most part, um, you know, when somebody realizes that they're, they have a high likelihood of getting a citation, um, that is a, a good enough deterrent to, to be able to change a habit. In this regard, I think we're, we're going down a path that could actually harm us with the increased usage of the, uh, the tool at the moment. If we don't increase the citations actually issued. And specifically, if we continue to, to send out the warning letters. Reason being would be if I am someone that, uh, you know, sort of, uh, perpetually is, is lighting off illegal fireworks. And we know a lot of these areas are repeat offenders year after year and holiday after holiday. If I'm going to get, uh, for a couple of years in a row, a warning letter from the city that never, uh, never amounts to a citation, I'm going to start to, to, you know, to feel as though, doesn't really matter, right? This is, so what? I'll keep lighting off fireworks and I'll, I'll receive a warning letter every year. Um, and at that point, I think now we, um, now we have really hurt ourself. Um, in, in regards to the effectiveness of this online reporting tool and the citations we issue. Um, and so I think we should just be conscious of that. Uh, I would even advocate that, you know, we may want to stop issuing these warning letters until we actually can raise the number of citations. Um, so then that way we don't, uh, send the wrong message to some of these repeat offenders. Um, and they just, you know, they, they collect the warning letters. Um, so that would be, uh, one potential recommendation I think that we should consider through PIS FIS uh, as we move forward and, and, um, and would love to hear my, my council colleagues' input, especially on the, the Public Safety Committee, uh, in that regard. But most importantly, I think, and to avoid that, because I do think that, you know, the warning letters are, are a good thing, but they're only good if we can actually increase the number of citations. And so I would echo the mayor's comments just in regards to, to being, uh, willing to take some more risk on, on issuing citations. Um, I, I recognize there's challenges, obviously, with being able to, to, to prove some of these incidents. But I, I would agree, it's certainly going to be a challenge for a neighbor, somebody that, that, you know, can go outside and capture video or, or a picture, um, and, and then report their neighbor. Um, and Nora, I wanted to see if you could, could speak a little bit to that. You mentioned that I think we could have had maybe twelve or so. And then one of the challenges was that we had, uh, a number of people, um, seven people, I guess, that, that, uh, seven or eight people, right, that, that, that decided, they didn't want to, to go through with it. Maybe just describe, uh, that to me a little bit more and then see if there's a way that we can, how, how is there maybe a legal way that we can avoid, uh, neighbors having to, to, you know, feel scared in doing that and, and still allow them to, you know, to, to submit video maybe or something that they can capture from their home. But yet they don't have to actually, uh, get deeply involved.
And, and, and I, uh, I, I don't know that we've had, that our office has been involved in an actual challenge. Um, you'll recall a few years ago, there was an issue with, um, issuing citations without, um, a lot of evidence. And so that was why if you were going to make a, a claim, and I think Rachel described her review process and it's described in the report, um, that part of the decision-making on, on, and Rachel, jump in if I don't have this correct. Um, but part of the decision-making on whether or not, um, a citation was going to be issued was, uh, what was included in that report? Was it just my neighbor did this or my neighbor did this? And here's the evidence of them going off and an address and street and that sort of thing. So that was the, that's, as I understand it, is, is, um, the way the review goes by code enforcement and how they sort out what, um, might be actionable. And I think that's the term. Um, should there be a challenge, um, that, uh, the, the, um, cost of the challenge has to be deposited first. And, um, and then, uh, that's when, uh, we need witnesses or evidence. Um, and it's really at that challenge level. The, um, the initial review on whether or not something's actionable, we're going to issue a citation, um, is, is done by code enforcement and that's Rachel's, um, process. But there, a, a couple of years ago, there were several, I, I think forty-some odd citations that had to be dismissed and, and because, because of, um, uh, not having anything to really back them up. And people were saying, I didn't have any fireworks and we hadn't, we had nothing other than a report, um, through the, through the website saying you did. And so I think that was part of the reason that we were trying to get more information, um, in those reports so that it was a more credible report and code could act on it.
May- maybe if you can speak to the, I think that, again, there was like seven or eight, right, that seemed as though they were actionable, maybe they had enough information. So I'm kind of curious, what did they have? And then was it just that, that the constituents were obviously concerned, you know, so that's really what I'm interested in as well.
Okay. And that, that would have to be Rachel, because as far as I know, they didn't make it to our office.
Yes, I can speak on that. Um, so we did have, um, seven additional reports that included enough evidence to support a citation. However, when we contacted the reporting parties, they were um, not willing to testify, should it be contested? And so we did, we changed those to warnings versus a citation. And it, and it's exactly as Nora mentioned, that should we get down the road and these get contested, um, you know, we're essentially relying on, on the public to, to convey that this actually happened to substantiate the violation. So if they aren't willing to, to testify to that, to that effect, we don't have anything else to go on to support that they, this actually did happen. Um, as far as them being contested, we have had several appeals internally, so all of our citations can be appealed, um, by hearing, uh, to a hearing officer before it goes to court. And, um, two of them were, um, upheld, but we did have one that we did end up changing, dismissing and changing to a warning. Uh, because there were some problems with determining, um, proper ownership of the property where the, uh, the fireworks took place. So the way our ordinance is written, we either have to identify the individual by actually, you know, getting that identification of that person, or we need to have the private property that it occurred on so that we can, um, find the owner, essentially. So the evidence is really important to substantiate both of those things.
In, in those seven cases, did they have video or picture evidence?
Yeah, they had either one of those, yes.
And, and so, and, and, and I guess that's not enough. Um, if they were to say, hey, look, I, I don't necessarily want to get involved, that's not enough evidence to go off of, uh, without them also testifying?
So our practice, since we began, um, since code enforcement's been involved, which is, gosh, it's been quite a few years now. Um, we, we started with the reviewing of reports. It went over to fire for a brief time, which is when we had the, that, um, the year that the, some citations got rescinded and then it came back to us. And so that's always been our practice. It was how we were, it was recommended and advised that we should handle it. So that's the way we've been, um, determining to issue those citations since we've been involved.
And, and Nora, legally, we could, we could, or we could just, in practice, we can change this, correct? Where, where if we wanted to not necessarily require that they testify, but just utilize the evidence that they have provided and say, look, we're going to go forward with this, with the evidence you provided?
Assuming the evidence has some level of credibility, um, we could. And, uh, it's, it's, uh, and, and the hearing, uh, the level before a hearing officer might be different if someone then challenged that and we'd have to evaluate that as we went, if they wanted to go to, to a court. Uh, but if there's credible evidence, our hearing officers are, are, uh, well-trained and they're sophisticated. And if there's credible evidence, they'll act on it. And if there are concerns about the level of evidence, and it sounds like from what Rachel described, um, there was at least in, in one matter, some concerns about that. And so, um, the, the hearing officer, uh, didn't sustain the appeal.
Great. And, and you know, what, and what I'm hoping for, and this is just a, for instance, but uh, the mayor and I put in our memo and this is something we've talked about for a couple of years now, the social host ordinance. But the opportunity where, let's say we did have the social host ordinance, um, and somebody had, it could even be just a, you know, their, their camera that they might have like a Ring doorbell or something like that. And if it shows clearly, right, the home across from them or the address, and that may be enough evidence, um, that where somebody says, look, I, you know, I don't want to necessarily have to, to testify. Uh, you know, should there not be enough evidence to then, to, to at least issue that citation to the, the, you know, under the social host ordinance? And, and could we not then be issuing a lot more citations? Granted, we would still need, you know, some video or photo evidence if somebody's not willing to testify. But I think that's, for me, that's where I'm hoping we, we end up because I do recognize, and I hear it as well from constituents that are concerned, right? They, they, you know, it's their neighbor who they've lived, you know, near for, for, for some time maybe and, um, you know, and they don't necessarily want to testify against them. But if there is, we can have some evidence and, and even just cite, if we don't have, you know, good enough, uh, identity on who the person is. But if we can use the social host ordinance and cite the house, and if we can do that more frequently, that would be my hope. So I, I definitely want to, want to, uh, encourage us as a city to go down the path where we're taking a little bit more risk in these citations. Especially when we have some of the evidence, even if it lacks somebody that says they, they, you know, they don't necessarily want to testify, but we look at that evidence and maybe there's enough there. Um, for me, that certainly, you know, even though it wouldn't have increased it much, even another seven, right? That's, it's moving in the right direction. Uh, but I think no matter what, we have to increase these citations uh, a lot more if this is actually going to be effective. And then again, as I said, I think what weren't some conversation is if we spend too many years in a row, uh, and too many holidays in a row issuing, uh, warning letters to the, to potentially the same people. Uh, at this point now, we've, you know, we, we've just told people what we're doing, which is essentially nothing besides issuing warning letters. So I think that one could backfire on us, uh, pretty soon here. So I, I appreciate the, the motions as well and, and, uh, or the memos as well and, and the motion. Uh, I'll be supporting this personally. It was for me, it was one of the, the, uh, most disruptive, uh, Fourth of July holidays, uh, this year. Uh, and, uh, I do have two dogs. Uh, fortunately for one, she's deaf. Uh, the other is not, and, uh, the other literally finds herself buried everywhere and anywhere in the house. And if, uh, she could, she, she'd run away. Um, and, uh, and I found myself walking around the neighborhood, uh, actually looking to report uh, different incidents, um, trying to do so. It, it just, I think it's, you know, um, i- this year was, was, was really uh, impactful, uh, and painful and, and, uh, want to be able to, to move forward with some, some, some better progress uh, on, on this tool and just on enforcement in general. So thanks.
Thank you. And I hope, um, all my colleagues take note of Councilmember Paralas's plea that we prioritize the social host ordinance at our next priority setting, uh, whenever that may be, uh, in the next couple of months. Uh, I think that, that would be where this goes if it's approved today. Uh, Councilmember Sparza?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, clearly this is an issue that unites the city. Um, no matter what district you live in, and I, uh, agree with, uh, Councilmember Foley, uh, just saying that it wasn't even Fourth of July. In my district, it was happening constantly. Um, so I just had a couple of quick comments. First off, I, I will be supporting the motion and I'd like to thank my colleagues for, um, for the memos and the, um, thoughtful suggestions that they proposed. Um, including the three-one-one information, um, in the mayor and Councilmember Paralas's memo, um, as well as the social host ordinance. And then, um, in the mayor from the vice mayor and council members, Jimenez and Davis, um, particularly looking at fines and working in cooperation with, um, other local governments to see if we could institute a regional ban. I think that's, um, I would like to see some conversations happen with that. I know when, um, I worked at the Red Cross, we actually would go and talk to governments and say, please ban fireworks because this creates a problem because we then report to fires that are caused by, um, by fireworks. Um, and so I just, I wanted to add that, um, that we really need to be honest with the public. I think that's the biggest frustration that I felt was as a city, clearly from the surveys, there was not a, a lot of clarity and understanding on the part of our residents on exactly what was needed and what, how it needed to be submitted and all that kind of stuff. But I just, I, I just want to be wary that we don't promise something that we can't deliver. Um, this was an unusual year because of COVID and I think everyone was trying to use up all their fireworks. Um, pretty much starting in May, all the way on in District Seven, it was nuts. And it would, it was nuts for hours and hours and hours. And I know it wasn't just my district. And so our residents are frustrated, um, and they want us to do something about it, but we also need to be really honest about what exactly we can and what we will do, um, and what we can't. And I just wanted to point something out. Um, when it comes to deployment of police officers in my district, um, it's the busiest police district in the city. Um, you know, some of these parties go along with other behavior and, um, sometimes that takes priority. Um, and so again, I just ask that we really put some thought into how we message this to residents that we can actually back up what we say. And I will be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Kimis?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, um, I concur with my colleagues. It is a, an issue that does unite us, I think. Uh, this was the worst year and I, I feel like, um, uh, partially because we didn't have any sanctioned, uh, fireworks displays this year. Uh, that was missing from, from us. I know when I first started, uh, as a council member, we were having a horrific time in my district. I got tons of phone calls. Um, felt the same way, uh, this year as I did in the first year, uh, and even worse. After we put together the, this, the Amadon, uh, fireworks display at the lake, we actually had reduced calls for service. We still had our Cahalan and some of the other places, but we did have, um, a reduced, uh, calls. And certainly, um, you could tell by the number of actual fires, uh, there were fifty-four, uh, reported fireworks-related fires in twenty-twenty and only fifteen in twenty-nineteen. So you could see that a lot, you know, there's actually a lot less fires, um, when we had these sanctioned fireworks. Uh, and I would hope, you know, I, I'm not going to be in office, but I, I would hope that we could still use, um, some of these sanctioned, uh, fireworks in the future and fund them because I think they could end up being a lot less expensive than, you know, enforcement and, um, uh, all the other things that we're doing, uh, that are, that are very expensive and very difficult to enforce. If, if you provide sanctioned, uh, places to, to, to have, um, fireworks displays. So I, I, I know that it might be out of our hands, but I think that we should make sure that, um, we continue to fund, uh, with TOT dollars, uh, those fireworks displays that are sanctioned. Uh, I also wanted to, um, I'm glad that staff did bring up the fact that we were enforcing a little bit more heavily last, uh, two years ago and, uh, we had to reverse some of the charges. I, I do recall that because, um, um, of, of the evidence. And so I know it's a, it's a fine balance and I hope that we can find it because I do believe as the rest of my colleagues do, that enforcement should be where we're at. It's, it's, nothing discourages people more than getting a ticket. Um, and I'd love to see more of it. I know that we took four hundred and fifty pounds of, of legal fireworks off the streets, but I'm sure that we could have done even more. Um, especially since we are, I already know, I already know every year that Cahalan is going to have a big fireworks display. And so will the Pioneer High School. It's guaranteed. Um, I've, it, it's been that way every single Um I've it it's been that way every single year, and I've reported it to police. And I don't know what can be done. Do you, um I'd love to hear from our police uh or fire department to see, you know. I give you guys these um, you know, you guys know this, and you patrol the areas. And then uh they wait, they wait you guys out, and then they, it happens anyway sometimes. Um and so, you know, how can we uh mitigate that even even though we know that that um that that's where they're going to be?
Yeah, from the police department standpoint, Councilman, yeah, the only way to mitigate it is literally pay an officer to plant his patrol car, or you need a two-man officer. One wouldn't be enough for officer safety. Uh but the problem is then which parks do we pick? Do we go to Cahalan? Do we go to whatever park? So yeah, that would be the ultimate way. You could plant an officer there, plant a couple at Almeden Lake, plant them all over the city. But you're right, you know, I I talked to the officers this year. Uh when you're talking about giving citations or enforcement, they they come up on a group of kids. It's almost like catching the kid, the teenager drinking beer. They hear the fireworks, they roll up, the kids will look at them and scatter in four different directions. Or the other ones, I was told, is they go to a park uh and this is middle of the day, so legally allowed to be there. They'd hear the fireworks, they'd roll up, and they'd talk to them, but it was not me, wasn't me, wasn't me. So there'd be some fireworks on the ground, the old, you know, the paper. So they'd give give them a warning, but you couldn't, you couldn't cite them because you'd have to unview the the citation, so.
Yeah, well, and those aren't the fireworks that I'm thinking about. I'm I'm thinking about some of these major displays with the, you know, like sh- shells and and things that are going up in some of these areas. And and I'd say a couple of years ago, you were the, I don't know if it was the fire or the police or a combination of both, you guys were actually taking out the fireworks before the Fourth of July. You you actually were enforcing on leads, if you will.
Yeah, I think there's one year our our street crimes or metro had a chance to do that. That was about two or three years ago. But that was just, that was the one we advertised, I think the mayor was talking about. That was just a one-time operation a night, and they were able to get some fireworks. But the to be honest, as a result of that, it didn't really make much effect because it's like drugs, it just kept continuing and continuing. But definitely, we're we're looking at different options.
Okay, well, thank you. And again, uh I don't know if the city manager, I I did allude to what I would hope that would, the city would continue on at least consider funding some of these sanctioned fireworks. I um and I'm not sure where they could be, uh but but I'm I'm hoping that um we continue to to do that because I, to me, that there, it was proven. Uh it's a proven uh way to mitigate a lot of the um, at at least the fires and a lot of the illegal activity. I don't I don't know if the city manager wants to weigh in on that, but that would be my comment, and I'll be supporting all the motions there.
Yeah, appreciate the comment, Councilmember. Um obviously, this year with COVID, um those types of events weren't allowed, but hopefully in the future um they are, and we can support them.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, let's vote then on the motion.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Peralas.
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Crossco.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sparza.
Yes.
Arenas. Arenas. Foley.
Aye.
Camus.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Liccardo.
Aye.
Going back to Arenas. Marking absent.
All right, thank you. Uh we'll move on then to item uh four point two, which are actions relating to the spending plan for the supplemental law enforcement services grant.
This is Tony. I want to go back to four point one. I just got a text after I hit mute from um Councilmember Arenas saying that she's um voting yes.
Okay.
So it's unanimous eleven zero.
All right, so that's now on the record. All right, four point two, I believe, is uh there is no uh report, I believe, is that right?
That's correct, Mayor, no report.
Okay. Four point two, actions relating to S L E S grant funding. Mr. Beekman. Mr. Beekman.
Yeah, hi, thank you. Um to talk about another year of S L E S funding, uh and now with the idea ideas of reimagining policing and community, S L S L E S is usually a large amount of grant money and a continuing fund that is often dedicated to the ideas of technology. In the beginning of the Mayor Liccardo Administration, ideas of technology innovation often revolved around surveillance technology. I hope San Jose has matured in the past several years and is beginning to better consider ideas of openness, public oversight, and community asks that can better define the future of innovation with technology that can help with the questions of demilitarization, positive community sustainability, and even helping uh a return to the ideas that we are San Jose. Uh you're getting cancer detection equipment this year, probably to help with the body camera issues. Um you know, body camera issues, uh there's a question of sustainability, and I hope we're wanting to address that at this time. It can help with better policing to consider the future of body cameras, and if they're really worth it. At City Council Tuesday, October twentieth, Mayor Liccardo stated there's only three hundred thousand dollars in this year's budget for S J P D recruitment and politely asked if we need if we need an additional eight hundred thousand dollars this year. Can we ask that three hundred dollars may already be enough this year? And at most, an additional one hundred thousand S J P D recruitment can be enough uh for this upcoming year. San Francisco and other various cities are working to reduce uh its recruitment class each year. I hope San Jose can be interested in the idea of every other year recruitment training. To also add, S J P D and City Council, uh David Sykes, excuse me, offered to work towards the ideas of an open negotiation process with the S G P O A this next year. I feel it can be asked, we can put a hold on COLA adjustments for this upcoming year or to demand a COLA hold for the next year. Um if I have any time left, thanks, uh thanks, thanks for.
All right, thank you, Mr. Beekman. Uh all right. Turning to council. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. All right, on the motion then, let's vote.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Peralas.
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Crossco.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sparza.
Yes.
Arenas. Foley.
Aye.
Camus.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Liccardo.
Aye.
I'm not going to mark Arenas absent yet. I'm going to check my texts.
Okay, there was a person who had raised his hand, uh the phone number ending five one four zero. Sir, did you want to speak on this item, on item four point two or on the next item?
Yeah, I I pressed star nine a long time ago. You guys skipped right over me, but thanks for letting me speak on this issue. Um San Jose P D isn't worthy of one more penny. They've they, when you call three one one or nine one one, you're put on hold. They take forever to come out. Not a matter of training. It's just the laziest police department in the world. They don't deserve any more money because too much is never enough for them. So I don't understand how you think you're going to enforce all these firework laws when Cinco de Mayo rages on for two or three days in a in an open shopping center with a with uh cars racing around and open containers and and everything else. Nobody came out for that. Okay, maybe when they started speeding around, they got, one guy got a ticket. This was during the height of the epidemic. No masking or no social distancing. Who's going to be able to enforce all these rules? Because San Jose P D, I mean, you're the biggest losers in in the entire uh country, and you're going to try to go out and enforce these these little laws and rules and everything. It's not going to, they need proper training for like when there's riots, when people are being attacked. You guys need to invest in the nine one one and three one one. I called three one 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 time. They didn't want to come out because they told me uh that I, that the district attorney wouldn't prosecute the people anyway. We got people on camera stealing things. You get their full face and their license plate driving away, and San Jose P D won't even follow up on that. They don't deserve one penny. I'm telling you, anybody, if you guys want to give the police department more money, you're crazy because too much is never enough for them. You've got people getting paid three hundred thousand dollars in benefits and retirement every year who who are just managing permits. You guys are crazy. You you are not going to be able to support a de- a department with what you're doing. Uh you guys are crazy. They they, hey, they just bought two.
James McKinnon, McKinnon.
Uh I also support his point about the not funding the police another penny. I've had similar issues. I also really fucking hate nigger.
Okay, uh we will not be calling an individual again. Back to the council. Let's vote.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Peralas.
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Crossco.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sparza.
Yes.
Arenas.
Yes.
Foley.
Aye.
Camus.
Aye.
Jones. Jones. Liccardo.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item uh four point three is urgency and regular ordinance control feral pig population. Uh there's no uh report.
Move to staff staff's recommendation.
Second.
Councilmember Jimenez, second, leaving Councilmember Foley, Roland Lebrun.
Uh thank you, and yes, I wanted to ask you to support the staff's recommendation, e- even though I do appreciate the effort that the staff made in uh making some potential enhancements of the ordinance. But what I'd like you to talk about is uh fixed behavior because there is always a cause and effect. And I wanted to give you an example of what happened six years ago. After decades of cohabitation without any issues, the problem started right after the county fenced off approximately one one hundred and thirty acres in Santa Teresa Park for cattle ranching, including a pond the pigs were using for access to water, at which point they had no option but to head for streams down on the valley floor. This is how they finished up my my neighborhood, I live right by the Santa Teresa Spring. So the question is, what happened this time? Is there more in, was there more inconsiderate fencing? Was it caused by the wildfires, or is it just the current drought? And and what I'd like to know is why, how about trying to get a better understanding of the causes while they're just opening fire and then asking questions later? And finally, I really wish someone would do something about the exploding coyote population and resulting carnage in our city every night, starting with how coyotes are using Canoas Creek to penetrate the District Two and District Ten neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beekman.
Hi, thank you. Uh real tough on my last item. Hopefully, uh I can be more relaxed in in talking about this item. Uh this is an item that's been on your uh council agendas uh all of October now. And uh I hope you're you're coming, thank you for that. I hope you're coming closer to figuring out good answers. Uh it's been kind of difficult for me to help with this issue. It's a learning process, and uh thanks for your patience and whatever I can offer. The way I'm understanding the issue is um, you know, the city government is a bit concerned and 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 worried about how to handle the situation. And it's it's my feeling after a month now that to simply hire a couple bounty hunters uh could really very neatly work on this issue and help take care of this problem. You've had a bounty hunter uh person, a really nice guy, call up uh and talk a few times that he says he's not quite getting messages back yet. And it just seems like uh overall, the bounty hunter idea, you know, you hire two or three people, and what would that be, twenty, thirty thousand, fifty thousand dollars a year? Uh you know, that could really handle the issue. I mean, maybe, you know, twenty thousand, maybe, maybe closer. Um you know, and it it does the job neatly, and uh you know, I I think it it takes a lot of us out of worry. That's my, you know, guesswork, and uh I've worried about uh, you know, the bows and arrows versus guns and uh all those issues. Uh it's been of concern to me, and uh I don't know how you're going to handle it, uh but that's my 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 community advice. And uh, you know, there's 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 good bounty hunters available at this time that can do the job neatly and well, it sounds like. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Person with the phone number ending five one four zero.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we should trap these pigs, if we can, and see, and put them on the city council's lawns, all your lawns. Let's put the pigs on there and see what they do. How would you guys like that if if pigs were rooting your yard? I mean, how would you guys like that? I don't think you would. So Eddie Garcia is afraid of arrows ricocheting. What else is he afraid of? I mean, this guy, I don't know what happened to him. Is it too much time during in June on the Alameda? I don't know. Like, is it, is it all these flag raising ceremonies? He forgot about like what the citizens need? He's not even in charge of the Department of Wildlife for the county or the city. So where is the Department of Wildlife and Fish and Game and and Animal Control on this? If if they can't do it, they should all be fired because that's what their job is, controlling animals. And we got a lot more of them coming in, mountain lions, coyotes. They're all over the place, man. There's a, there's a, there's a mountain lion in my neighborhood. I'm in the middle of suburbia. But you know what we have no shortage of? Parking enforcement driving up and down the street. We got this loser who drives up and down my cul-de-sac. I don't know what he's looking for. But you guys have money for that, you have time for that, you have time for park police to harass people at parks, but you don't have the time or the idea or the resources to try to corral these wild pigs. They've only been around since the time of the Spaniards, it's been the seventeen hundreds. We've had wild pigs in this area. Those those go back generations by hundreds of years. They've had a long time to build up that population. You wonder why there's a lot. It's not because there's a drought, it's just because they've been building up the population, and no one had enough courage to take these these animals out. Your city council needs to come up with an idea, or it's only going to get worse. Look, if there was that pig on my yard, you better.
Thank you. Uh returning to the council. Councilmember Camus.
Mayor, um I I, while I appreciate staff's um memo, um I do have some questions because I don't necessarily agree with the assertions. I wanted to see if anybody has actually reached out to archery archery professionals before we made that um uh before we made this assertion that that the bows and arrows will ricochet on the Highway one oh one. I mean, I I reading it, I I just, I didn't necessarily agree with the assertions made in the memo.
Thank you, Councilmember Camus. This is Matt Kano, Director of Public Works, and also on the call today, Dave Knopf, um Police Chief, and Jay Torado, our Deputy Director of Animal Services. We had a lot of internal conversations uh between police and Public Works Animal Services and also conversations with California Fish and Wildlife as well in order to come up with this recommendation. So to directly answer your question whether we spoke to archery professionals, um I don't think we directly did, um but I'll defer to either Chief Knopf or Jay wants to add to that answer.
Yeah, Matt, um again, good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers and members of the public, Jay Torado with Department of Public Works. Um in part of our research into this matter of one of the departments that we did speak with is California Fish and Wildlife, and more recently, actually, uh the United States Department of Agriculture, uh who is actually addressing a lot of the national issues when it comes to uh feral swine, as they would call it. Um both organizations have told me and provided me their opinion when it comes to use of bows and arrows. And uh one of them, I believe, uh did have experience with using a bow and arrow. And um that was one of the recommendations from, actually, that was a recommendation from both organizations when it comes to the use of. when it comes to the use of bows and arrows and their concerns when it comes to, um, not being effective, first of all, with when it's being used on a pig, a wild pig. And at the same time, the potential for it to be, um, errant and just like off a rock or another.
Well, I I that's why I was hoping that you'd talk to somebody who's actually shot a pig with a bow and arrow because I don't know if it's going to be effective. I I don't. I don't have an expert that could tell me whether this thing is effective or not. But I I will take your your word for it. However, you know, I I I didn't I didn't think that the ricochets off of the golf course is going to hit Highway one oh one. I did, I just, there there were just things in there that I I just didn't necessarily agree with in in the conclusions. Uh, since you brought up the Federal Department of Agriculture, I know that they have a a program for depredation, um, but California doesn't qualify for this service because in California, pig, uh, the pigs are only, um, classified as a nuisance and then they need to be classified as as something else. Are they working? Is the California Fish and Wildlife working with the Department of Agriculture to change that classification so that we can actually, um, rid ourselves of these nuisance animal, these, you know, very, uh, you know, I I I don't want people thinking that that, um, these these are like little tiny, it's not Wilbur here from from, uh, you know, Charlotte's Web. We're talking about five hundred pound creatures that could do some serious damage to pets, houses, um, you know, and, you know, lawns are the least of it, but, um, they're dangerous animals. And and do you know if California is at least working with the, um, Department of Agriculture on this?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. Uh, I did, uh, look into it a little bit further and on the USDA's website, uh, they do have a section called APIS. Uh, it's, uh, Animal and Plant Health Inspection Service. And under that department, they have a Wildlife Services and, uh, they do operate in California. And actually, currently, uh, they are operating as of last two weeks, uh, out of the landfill, Kirby Canyon landfill, which is about two foot three miles away. Uh, they've recently been op- in operation and have been in direct contact with their supervisor. Uh, their primary purpose really is for, uh, which is one of their objectives, is, uh, research, uh, disease, um, that feral swine can carry. But, um, I'm also being told that if they do encounter a wild pig, they they are actively trying to trap them. I'm also addressing them, uh, the best way they can. And so it sounds like they're going to be there for a while, um, maybe three to five months. And so, uh, they are, they do work, uh, coordinate with the California Fish and Wildlife. And from what I read from this report, uh, in twenty fourteen, they created a program called National Feral Swine Damage Management Program. And California is on that list. They have a five tier system. And California appears to be at a higher level. So it does sound like they do operate in California. Uh, but, um, it really just depends on the area and they would have to designate an area uh, for them to be able to put more resources, uh, to address the problem.
Well, you know, I I appreciate that. I was, I'm hoping that we can not drop, you know, stop thinking about how to help solve these issues because these issues are real. Um, I know, you know, Mr. Lebrun, uh, correctly, uh, said that, um, a lot of these problems happened after the county stopped their depredation program. They used to do it in, you know, the, um, Silver Creek Hills, Santa Teresa Foothills area and a lot of the other large parks that they have. Has anybody talked to the county to see if they would re-implement the program? Because, you know, that's where they're coming down from. They don't live, uh, you know, in in the streets of San Jose. They live in the in the hills and they only come down, you know, because the grubs are, you know, breeding right now.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. And that is probably going to be, uh, one of our process. Uh, I I am now invited, uh, to a once a month meeting with, uh, USDA and I believe, uh, Fish and Wildlife as well to continue to look at this issue because we know it's a community problem. And so, um, I know we're not supporting the the ordinance, but, uh, we understand that it is a problem within the city of San Jose and surrounding areas. And so we are going to continue to talk to these organizations to see what other resources we can implement within the city for the county and to help out, uh, the community.
Then could the maker of the motion actually include a, um, uh, a section, um, an effort to contact the county to see if they could restart their depredation program?
I'm open, I'm open to that, Johnny.
Okay. You you know, I I I um, I I know that, um, I know that this this may not, um, obviously, that there's there's, we're we're not going to be going down this path, but we we do need to do something about it. And I'm hoping that if we could address the issues at the source, that we might have a, you know, better outcomes than what we currently have. So, um, I appreciate the maker of the motion. I don't know if you need the second to approve it, a direction to staff to reach out to the county to, um, see if they could restart their depredation program. I don't know who's, in fact, I don't know who seconded it.
Leave that up to staff. I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, this is Matt Kano. We have no problem reaching out to the county. And we will do so.
Okay. Well, I'm hoping that it was okay with a second. If not, then I can make the second myself if the seconder doesn't want to speak up.
Tony, was it me? I forgot who seconded. I've if it's me, I'm fine, but I don't remember.
Tony's going to tell us if it's fine.
It's fully seconded, seconded.
Okay, perfect. We're in good shape.
Okay.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Reynus?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, I just want to thank, um, staff for their consideration of 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 the control of the feral pig population. I know it it only impacts certain, um, districts, but it's a huge impact. Um, and for my area, we have Silver Creek Country Club. And maybe some of you received some of those, uh, pictures and it's just devastating to, um, the property. And one of the reasons why they were looking to and hoping to have an additional tool in their toolbox and have, um, this way of controlling the pig population is because the way the the way that they enter into the country club is through Silver Creek. And, uh, and to build a fence around that, you know, is it's close to a million dollars. It's just not feasible. Mind you, the this issue is only around, uh, through, I think, the fall, uh, period. So it's not all year round, but it's devastating enough, um, that it really, uh, creates an impact for communities. And not just Silver Creek Country Club, but a lot of the folks who live out in the Meadowlands, uh, the villagers. Those are the folks that usually get, uh, you know, wake up in the morning and see all of their, um, front lawn, uh, torn up. And, uh, you know, their sprinkler system and everything that goes along with it. Um, so it, I'm I'm glad that we're getting closer to to adding to the toolbox. It's, um, it's a shame that we can't include this additional one, but I understand why. I understand that we need to have this one hundred and fifty yard buffer. And so I have a question about tranquilizers. We never really discussed this in past meetings. But so I wanted to see if there this, the department staff had already inquired around tranquilizers and using that. Just trying to figure out if there's another tool that we can add to this toolbox. Um, so I wanted to hear.
Hi, this is Matt Kano. I'll start. Um, I just want to say, no, we did not, um, discuss tranquilizers, tranquilizers in any of our internal staff meetings in the past few weeks. And, um, I'll defer to Jay or Chief Knopf if they have anything they want to add to that.
Yeah, Matt, and thank you for the question, Councilmember. As far as, uh, tranquilizers, in my experience, when I was in the field, uh, we would mainly respond to injured animals um, and actually including, um, some injured, uh, wild pigs in the past. But that normally would require, uh, veterinarian, uh, because it, uh, the sedatives are considered a controlled sub- uh, substance under the DEA. And so, and in addition to that, pedal pen, um, the, uh, municipal code actually prohibit any sort of projectile, which, you know, includes arrows and darts and everything else. And for an animal services standard of, uh, uh, chemical capture, uh, device, as we call it, is actually also considered a firearm under the penal code for those purposes only. So those are some of the, kind of the challenges that one would face as a, you know, person that's, you know, either a trafficker or whatever the case may be.
Thank you, Jay. You know, I I just thought I'd throw that out there, um, to see if if anything's stuck. I know we've been throwing out a lot of, um, what we think are solutions and it just is not feasible because we have people living really close to where these feral, the feral pig community is coming in contact. So I completely understand that the safety of our residents are the first thing that we think about. Um, unfortunately, it still creates a a problem that we haven't really addressed. And so I look forward to seeing what, um, kind of collaboration we have with the county and what kind of problem solving we can have with them, um, for some of these, uh, just really suburban areas that continue to have, uh, feral pigs. We also have benefits from being out in these suburban areas because we do see around the same time, we see a lot of, uh, a lot of turkeys that come down from the hillsides and, you know, unfortunately, I I don't know why they come down uh, during the months of, uh, fall, especially November, being that there are usually the plate on our di- uh, dinner table during Thanksgiving, but so be it. Um, we get to to have some of the the, uh, nature really close to us as well as some of the drawbacks. And so I think it's just part of of living in in some of the areas that we do. Um, but thank you for the work that you're doing. I look forward to seeing what, um, what kind of, uh, solutions we come up with the county. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Crossco?
Hi, um, just a couple of quick questions for the experts on this, uh, on this, uh, subject. Are these animals safe to consume?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. I I'm not, I I don't have a lot of experience in that. And, um, so I I wouldn't be able to answer that accurately.
Okay. And then the, and is there any way to to find out if they are safe to consume?
Yeah, my apologies. I I I can reach out to our partners at California Fish and Wildlife and, uh, USDA.
Yeah.
And we will reach out and communicate that with you.
And then the other question, uh, because I know that people hunt for, not just for game, but, you know, people do hunt for, for, you know, to consume the the animal. Uh, and then the other question is, uh, do we know at what point? I mean, I know that that folks who are being, who are witnessing the 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 damage that, uh, that the animal leaves behind, I mean, they're witnesses to it. But do we know at what point, uh, the Bureau or the organizations, uh, define uh, an animal as being overpopulated or? I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what the technical terms are, yeah, in this, in this, in this industry, you know. At, you know, I know that on some islands when they're overpopulated, you know, they allow hunting to take place uh, in order to control the population. Uh, you know, my son, when he heard about this item, came and brought me videos, actually, of of wild boars being hunted. And the reason why I was asking about whether it was safe to consume was because, uh, a famous chef actually went hunting for, uh, wild boars who were overpopulated in in a different area and, uh, and, you know, did the whole thing. Uh, but, um, but I'm just asking, do we know at what point they're overpopulated aside from the damage that they're leaving behind?
Thank you for that question. I'm, at this point, we, I I've actually asked the two departments, uh, if they have a an idea on what the feral pig population is within our county. And and there's not an exact number or tracking, uh, that they're doing. But, uh, as far as USDA, uh, the, one of their objectives is to actually, uh, look at feral swine damage as it relates to crops, uh, impacts on livestock, uh, disease threats, uh, human safety and property damage, and also, uh, affect on wildlife and habitat. And so, um, they, it is a national problem. Uh, I think I read on their, uh, website. Actually, they put out a, a fiscal, a five year fiscal report. And I think it's, um, in that report, if I remember correctly, it's a one point six billion dollar damage annually in that report. So they are aware and they are acknowledging that it is a problem. Um, but it is a challenge, as you can imagine, to, uh, effectively deal with the problem.
Yeah. And and what I saw on the video that my that my son, uh, showed me were, these animals were huge as, uh, Councilmember, I think it was Councilmember Camas that just mentioned, they they're not li- these little piglets, you know. And, uh, you know, I'll refrain from my own opinion as to whether I think they're cute or not, but they're not tiny. They're they're large, very large animals that, um, that I, you know, you just stated the the amount of, uh, damage that they can incur. But I I have to tell you, I I had a very different opinion, um, a week ago or whenever this, uh, item was brought up originally. Um, and I wasn't thrilled about it coming up, uh, than what than the opinion that I have today. Uh, the the one thing I will ask is, uh, the videos that my son showed me were very different in terms of how to dispose of them. And so they had these, the large traps, um, and they were caught very quickly. And then they were, in the trap, they were, uh, shot in, uh, it versus, you know, a bow and arrow out in the in the wilderness. And so what would prevent us from doing something like that?
Awesome. Um, so thank you, Councilmember, for the question, Matt Kano, again. Um, the, um, right now, our ordinance does allow for pigs to be trapped and disposed of. At the ordinance being, uh, the request is there's a few pigs out there, it sounds like, from what we're hearing at Coyote Ri- Coyote Creek Golf Course, that have gotten too smart for the traps. And and so the question where we where we looked at in the memorandum is whether they can be shot with bow and arrows from a distance. Um, but our ordinance currently does allow for animals to be trapped and then disposed of.
But, uh, so thank you for that, Matt. So are we saying that that there's just a few of them that we're trying to to eliminate because these are the exceptions to the rule that can't be captured? Or are the traps? You know, this is a difficult conversation for me to have because, um, uh, I'm trying to just, uh, understand which is the most humane way of disposing of an animal of this, uh, of this size. And so if you could just help me guide this conversation.
Sure. Thanks for the question. And Jay, if I say anything correct, Jay's going to correct me here if he needs to. But yeah, there, from what we're hearing, this is for those few animals that have gotten trap wise or trap smart. Um, the rest of the animals that are being trapped, um, are legally, we, trappers are able to dispose of them right now under our municipal code.
I see. Okay. Okay. Well, thank you so much. That that answers, uh, as much as I was interested in in knowing. I guess the the only question that you haven't been able to answer is whether or not they're, uh, safe for consumption.
Yes, I just I just heard, um, from an expert, um, who told me, yes, they are safe for consumption.
And what are we doing with the with the with the carcass?
Um, that whoever's trapping the pig is, um, is dealing with those. We're not, um, managing that process.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'll just chime in if somebody knows nothing about boar, but I am, I have it on good sources that apparently, um, the male meat is not very, uh, palatable unless the male is fixed somehow. So there is, uh, there are issues. But anyway, uh, since we won't be passing around, uh, recipes, recommendations, I I just think we should find a way to sic the wild boar on, um, on anybody lights off fireworks. Maybe that would help address one issue. Um, all right, are there any other comments before we vote? Hopefully more worthwhile than mine. Okay, we will vote then.
Menendez?
Yes.
Peralas?
Aye.
Yep.
Uh, aye.
Crossco?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Barza?
Ms. Barza.
Yes.
Arenas.
Yes.
Foley.
Aye.
MS.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
La Cardo.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. We're on then to the item 5.1, which is the public hearing for the airline support program. Go to public comment for 5.1, public hearing for airline support program. I will come back to council. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Aye, good.
Let's vote.
Menes.
Yes.
Peralas.
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Crossco.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Barza.
Yes.
Arenas.
Yes.
Foley.
Aye.
MS.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
La Cardo.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 5.2 is a consultant agreement with HNTB for the US 101 Mayberry Berry S Oakland Corridor Improvement Project. There's no, there's no presentation. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, on to public comment for item 5.2, the consultant agreement with HNTB. All right, coming back to council, let's vote.
Menes.
Yes.
Peralas.
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Crossco.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Barza.
Yes.
Arenas.
Yes.
Foley.
Aye.
MS.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
La Cardo.
Aye. Are we going to come back to 7.1 at 5 o'clock? I believe that's what the agenda says. So we'll move forward to 7.2, which are actions related to St. James Park, Capital Vision Performing Arts Pavilion Project. And we do have a presentation. Nicole, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. I'm going to ask that Katie Martin share the screen. She's going to run our presentation. So I'm joined by Katie Martin from Public Works and Stacy Palomar. And I also have Robert Manford and Ty Chow, Ty Chow from PBCE in support to talk about the EIR. So I'll go ahead and start as Katie gets teed up. The first thing I want to do is just talk you through, can we get into the presentation, Katie? Are you?
Yes, just bear with me one second.
Sure. I'll give you a little history primer while Katie's getting set up. So we are here for St. James Park. This has been an ongoing park project of ours since at least 2015, when council adopted the St. James Revitalization Strategy. That revitalization, revitalization strategy was a five-point plan that included providing enhanced maintenance for the park, activation of the park, which we had been doing through our Viva Parks Program, relocating feeding programs out of the park and providing a safe indoor and more recently outdoor space for community groups to provide feeding of the homeless that reside near the park. The fourth item was governance and long-term funding for the park, which is something we're still working on. And the last item was a capital vision, developing a capital vision and moving that forward. And that included elements around Levitt. Katie, how you doing? You want me to try to share? There we go. So that included providing elements around Levitt. In 2016, council directed us to do a full environmental EIR for the project. 2016, we issued requests for proposals to do a design competition to support this capital project. In March 2017, we accepted, council accepted CMG as the winning competition entrant. And so since March 2017 till now, we have been working on developing the master plan to 25% design completion. That has included community input that you're going to hear about tonight and a variety of project elements. We've also been working to advance the EIR, which you're going to hear about. And so with that, I'm going to transition to Stacy or to Katie.
Stacy.
Oh, sorry, Stacy.
Good afternoon, members of the council, Mayor La Cardo, City Manager's Office. I'll just give a brief project overview, the goals. There are many goals associated with St. James Project. And one of the goals of revisioning St. James is to encourage a sense of community and make it a destination for all age groups, engage a large audience, and just make it a place where residents can gather. We also want to celebrate its history. It is one of the oldest open spaces in San Jose, along with other parks such as Caesar Chavez and Washington Square, other open spaces. It is over 150 years old. And originally, it was laid out in 1848 as St. James Square and has served as another anchor for downtown San Jose. We also want to bring community together and partner with some of the stakeholders to celebrate performing arts and music. And we feel that the pavilion will serve this purpose. We also want to maintain the park as a safe, thriving facility. We feel that activating it and drawing in foot traffic will help us serve this goal. And another goal that we have is to create play spaces such as the playground and multipurpose areas like the plaza and the lawn and the pavilion that will also provide an opportunity for the community to come together. Next slide, please. There's been a number of community outreach events throughout 2017. In August, we started with the National Night Out. And that drew in a large crowd. There was over 16 interactive informational boards. Then in September of 2017, we saw Vivekaya. And we took, the consultant took comments from National Night Out, comments that the community had on the design, refined the design and updated it to bring it to Vivekaya. And they presented it, and there was no shortage of input as well at Vivekaya San Jose. So as I mentioned, they refined the design, for example, to include two dog park areas instead of one. And they also incorporated some of the playground design input from the community. Also, we to date have presented, I'm sorry, Katie, go back to the other slide. We have also prevented, presented to the Parks and Recreation Committee, the Planning Commission, the Historic Landmark Commission, and ongoing, we have the St. James Advisory Committee monthly meetings. Next slide, please. And this is just an example of some of the interactive exercises that we had going on at the community outreach events. And for, in this slide, for example, the community can vote on elements of the design. And it's a great way to get a sense of what people want, which was very important throughout this process. And with that, I'll turn it over to Katie.
Hi, I'm Katie Martin. I'm the project manager with Public Works. I'm going to go through a project overview and then we'll walk through some of the features of the park design. The overall strategy of the park design is to celebrate the historic edge. And by that, we mean identify, preserve, and rehabilitate historic resources and to provide a new venue for community cultural expression. The second pillar is to activate the contemporary core, inviting people into the park with a variety of amenities and events that attract a diverse group of users. And then finally, to integrate the park paseo. So integrating the, the past and the memorials with the present and the future. I'm going to quickly walk through the plan. And then, as I mentioned, I'll go through the park features in a little bit greater detail. So one of the things that this design is trying to achieve is balancing event and episodic activity with daily activation. So we want a park that is vibrant all of the time. So we're going to start from the outside and work our way into the contemporary core. So on the outside of the park, we have the Victorian Gardens with a meandering path, which is reminiscent of the historic park. As we move in, we have the Park Paseo and the Memorial Walk with the existing memorials to remain. In the northeast quadrant, we have the Levitt Pavilion and Levitt Lawn. And as well, there's a support building for the Levitt Pavilion events. And as we move counterclockwise, we have a cafe building. And the McKinley Meadow, there's a plaza in front of the McKinley Meadow. And there's a fountain that recalls the historic fountain, a custom playground, a docent building to enhance the site presence of park staff. We have the two dog parks mentioned that were refined through the community design process. We have a picnic pavilion and a picnic area. So as I walk through a few of the park features, the Memorial Walk is a generous leaping path and it highlights the history of San Jose. It organizes the park circulation and creates a framework for future memorials. Regarding the Memorial Walk, San Jose has a real opportunity to be a leader in new ways of remembering past events. The next feature is the Performance Pavilion. It's intended to be an iconic functional sculpture. It's a new city landmark and we can imagine this being an Instagram moment, something like the Chicago Bean. It's also intended for daily community use. And it's designed with safety and sightlines in mind. So it's lifted up off the ground to enhance a sense of safety for park users. Moving on, we have the Dog Park and Picnic Grove. It's meant to maximize social interaction and it's designed for community use. And it's part of the daily activation strategy. Next, we have the playground, which is meant to be a destination playground. So it's for both nearby residents, but also for people across the city and region. It would be one of a kind, reflecting the character of San Jose. And it's designed for all abilities and ages from toddlers to youth. This, this portion of the park is strategically located near the restrooms and docent building as well as the plaza, which could have food trucks or things like that during events. We have the fountain next. And we've seen the success of interactive fountain and features at Caesar Chavez and the intense use of that area in the summer. We want to bring that kind of energy to St. James Park. So this would be a dynamic and interactive fountain, which recalls the historic fountain at the center of the park. And it would become a destination that really pulls people into the heart of St. James Park. The final feature we'll talk about is McKinley Meadow. It provides for more passive enjoyment of the park. Traditionally, this northwestern quadrant and the west side of the park in, in general has been a more passive part of the park. And so this reflects that. And it, you can imagine picnics or reading in the sun or tossing a frisbee with a friend, that type of entertainment for this area. And the plaza in front of it allows for flexible paved space to supplement the adjacent uses. So each of these areas is designed to foster social interaction and community and to inspire regular use and new appreciation and really bring some value to the park for city residents. And with that, I'll hand it back over to Nicole.
Thanks, Katie. This is again Nicole Burnham, Deputy Director, Department of Parks, Recreation and Neighborhood Services. So as I mentioned earlier, we were directed by council to do a full project level EIR for this project, which we did. It did identify significant unavoidable impacts relating to cultural resources, noise, aesthetics, and recreation. So part of the action we are requesting today is approval of a statement of overriding considerations. In short, the, the impacts relate to noise, particularly from the pavilion. It's, the EIR recommends a series of operational management techniques to manage that noise and mitigate the impact to the neighbors, like removing, ending all events before 10:00 PM and some other operational requirements that the Levitt team would implement. The cultural and aesthetic and even some of the recreation impacts relate to the fact that the St. James Park is in the historic district. And there are some, some certain elements of the design that were considered to potentially not meet the requirements of the historic district, specifically the fact that Second Street comes through the park and, and a couple of other elements of the design. But we believe that the, the ability to move this park forward and move this project forward does exceed the, the potential impact to the, to the district. All other areas of sequo analysis were less than significant impact. There were a number of alternatives evaluated, including putting the, the whole park and all of these amenities in another location like Plaza Park or Discovery Meadow. But ultimately, given the project objectives that Stacy articulated early on, the only, you know, St. James Park was the right location for this project to meet the project objectives. And so the last slide is just our recommended action. We're requesting you that you adopt a resolution certifying the Capital Vision and Performing Arts Pavilion, making the findings, making certain findings about significant impacts and that you approve this updated master plan and capital vision for the park. With this approval, we would move forward into identifying and evaluating an implementation strategy for the plan. Right now, we're asking for approval of all elements. But the full funding is not available for the project. So we're going to need to do additional evaluation on how we move forward with the project. And that evaluation is ongoing. And we would come back to council with that recommendation in the future. And with that, we open up to questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Peralas.
Thanks, Mayor. Is there nobody from the public?
There are, and I'm sorry, I should have gone there first. So thank you for reminding me. Let's go to members of the community. This is regarding the item relating to the St. James Park Capital Vision and Plan. I see Phil Ko events. I'm guessing that's Phil Mareska. Hello, Phil. Phil, you're still on mute. There you go.
Okay, yes. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members and city staff. My name is Phil Mareska and I'm the current board chair of the Friends of Levitt Pavilion, San Jose. But today, I also come to you as a neighbor. Three years ago, I bought my home on North Third Street, just two blocks from St. James Park. This was years after my commitment to the park and the Levitt Pavilion began in 2014. After many years of failed plans for this park, I firmly believe we now have the opportunity to finally make it work as a welcoming and inclusive community destination. The Levitt Pavilion concept is building community through music by providing 50 free, family-friendly concerts every year. This is not an ideal, but a promise and a successful strategy that has transformed underutilized park spaces 10 times throughout the country. We can and we should do it here. The Friends of Levitt supports the staff recommendations to certify this EIR and approve the master plan for the park. As your nonprofit partners, we are excited to bring a community-run Levitt Pavilion to St. James Park in the near future. Thanks for your time.
Well, thanks for your leadership. Mr. Bigman.
Hi, thank you. I've lived in the downtown area, in and out for about the past 15, 20 years now, 15 years. And you know, there's been a lot of rhythms and patterns and practices to, to the homeless people who live in the downtown area and St. James Park. And I'm wondering if this is a time, you know, to consider like some of your better practices with housing and just taking care of people in the last 15 years and whatever that can be. If it's, this can be a time to apply some of those practices and what, what could be good for the area. I guess that's about all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. The person with the phone number ending 5140?
I mean, this isn't Los Gatos, Palo Alto. This is San Jose, the city that doesn't seem to be able to solve any problems, including the homeless. I mean, you're going to bring your kid to Needle Park? You're going to bring your dog to Needle Park? Not only needles, there's human feces. I mean, park police, I mean, they do a great job harassing people at other parks, but not that one. Like park police will go to the Rose Garden and harass people sitting on a picnic bench having a glass of wine. But hey, 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 don't go to St. James Park. Let that be Needle Park. Let that be Needle Park and Human Feces Park. I mean, two dog parks, really? There should be no dogs allowed in the park, as far as I'm concerned. Nothing like stepping on a pile of that, too. Yeah, you really, who's gonna clean the bathrooms there? Who's gonna clean the park for the kids? Who's gonna keep the bums away? Because they're there, and you know it, and everybody knows it, that there's gonna be needles that people are gonna step on. Is that whole place big enough to support all this? Ah, not really. Don't think the infrastructure's there. And who's gonna get on county transit, what's left of it after COVID, to get down there to go to Needle Park? That's what you guys should call it. You should call it Needle Park, because that's what it is. You could also call it Human Feces Park, but eh, it's not appetizing, I don't know. But yeah, who's gonna take care, you gotta get rid of the homeless situation there before you could ever move on to make this community arts center where people can express themselves. Once again, we're not in Los Gatos, we're not in Palo Alto. We're in San Jose, the wannabe San Francisco with the bums and needles and the human feces and the supposed mass transit. You people are crazy to think that you're gonna make anything out of that park. That park, first of all, it's got bad juju attached to it, man. There was a lynching there, and the last place, probably.
Thank you. Maria Peterson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you for listening to my questions. I live one block of St. James' Park. In fact, I'm like 30 feet from the park. And with regard to the proposed Pavilion and the number of concerts per year and the loudness of the music, I would like to know if Friends of Levitt and the San Jose Council members and the Planning Committee members could compromise with us, the residents and the businesses who live and work one block from the park? Not two blocks, not several blocks away, but just one block away from the park. And I, number two, I'd like to ask how many council members and planning committee members and Friends of the Park and Friends of Levitt live within one block of the park? Number three, I would like to mention that Levitt Pavilion has pavilions throughout the United States, but none of them are within 50 feet of residential buildings, houses, or businesses, like would be the case with St. James' Park. I'd also like to mention that there were three people in, in the, in San Jose City Hall who showed some compassion for the people living and working within one block of the park with regard to noise levels from the, from the 300 concerts per year that's proposed by Levitt. The, the three people were Magdalena Carrasco, Commissioner Deborah Torres, who in September 23 said she asked if a Pavilion was actually needed, and Commissioner George Casey, who in the September 23 meeting said he would be concerned if he lived here, if he lived near the park, like we do.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Oh, I'm done?
I'm sorry. Everyone has two minutes.
Okay.
All right. Thank, thank you very much for your questions. We'll get, we'll respond to them to the council. Karen John-Louven. John?
Thank you. We appreciate that the city is anxious to capture the funds offered by the Levitt Foundation for construction of a large performance pavilion, especially in light of the city's revenue shortfalls caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. However, we do have concerns that bear consideration. As a resident that lives across from the park, the noise mitigation by the city's own EIR admission has admitted that there is inadequate consideration that has been taken place for the noise that will be generated up to 300 times a year. I also would like to point out that having a historic garden design that shoehorns in a space for up to 300 performances per year with up to 5,000 attendees is in no way enhancing a design for a historic district. Every structure around the park is either a historic structure or has been designed to create a facade that's harmonious with the city's historic district resignation. So why place a pavilion that is going to cause problems of security, sanitation, noise abatement, and trampling of the garden in that space? It makes no sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie Snell. Welcome, Jackie. You had your device muted just a minute ago. I think you just muted yourself, Jackie. We're not able to hear you.
Just un-muted myself. Am I okay now?
Yeah, you are. Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. I also live across the street from the park, and I believe that I'm gonna have to move out of here before you build the Pavilion. The noise alone is enough to make this intolerable, and your EIR says so. Beyond that, you've already dismissed the idea that we'll lose our historic, whatever you call it, district. Also, this is, this is not for the community. I don't know where you're hoping to bring 5,000 people in, but this, this is never gonna be useful for the neighborhood. You're not gonna get rid of the homeless people. If you would just keep the drunks out of the children's playground, maybe mothers could bring their children there. But that's not gonna change. I'm very concerned about even having 5,000 people in the park. I think that the blocks around are gonna have a problem with alcohol, with drunks, with urine and garbage and all that drugs even. So I, I don't see how this is good for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Karen Autry?
Hi there. I'm a resident of downtown San Jose who lives within a block of St. James' Park, and I am speaking in strong support of this project. St. James' Park is a tremendous community asset, and at this time, it is woefully underutilized. I walk my dog in and through St. James' Park every day, and not a day goes by that I don't wish it was more of a cultural and community gathering place. For those of us who've chosen to live, work, and play in downtown San Jose, the reason we've made that choice is because we want to have opportunities for community engagement, arts, recreation, dining, and a whole range of activities available to us within walking distance of our homes. We want to be able to contribute to and participate in a vibrant downtown, and this Capital Vision and Performing Arts Pavilion project would allow us to do just that, and is frankly, one of the most exciting projects proposed for downtown San Jose in a very long time. Currently, on the rare occasions when there is something happening in the park, it's like a clarion called the neighborhood. It becomes this exciting opportunity to come out of our homes and engage with our neighbors as we enjoy these creative cultural activities together. Downtown living in this area is unique in that we don't have driveways or yards or quiet streets on which we can meet up with our neighbors. That's the price we pay for high-density urban dwelling. But what we desire in return and count on our city to make possible for us are community gathering spaces where individuals and families can come together to partake in these arts and cultural community offerings, recreation activities, and things like that. The park is sorely in need of improvements, and this project would provide them. It would also provide jobs and bring some economic revitalization to the area, which is needed now more than ever. When you create an exciting destination with well-planned, family-friendly programming, people come, and they ride public transit, and they spend money in local establishments. Thank you.
Thank you. Phone number ending in 5006?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Victoria Baugh, and I live directly across the street, 65 feet from where the Pavilion is planned to be located. And I completely agree that most of the things that are planned for the park will make a big difference and will improve the park dramatically. The Pavilion, on the other hand, with 50 to 300 events planned a year, up to 5,000 people, living directly across that, just imagine if you had an event center directly across from your house that was operating either 50 to 300 times a year. And you'll understand why our issue is. The historic nature of the park apparently doesn't seem to matter. It has unavoidable impact. The noise level, that's also an unavoidable impact. If anybody thinks that the noise is going to quit by 10:00 PM, they're crazy. We have had multiple events happen here that were supposed to end at 10 o'clock, and they did not. They, they, music stopped, the noise continued until much later on. So my proposal, and, and I don't think it's gonna be listened to, but I'm offering it, is do everything else that you had talked about and locate the Pavilion outside of a residential neighborhood. And that should be possible. There are locations available. And the other thing I want to say is, in all of the things that I've heard about the planning on this, not once have I heard it planned as if. What I've heard is everybody talking about it as if it's a done deal. And that's kind of what it feels like. So that's, that's my piece, and I've said what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Susan?
Good afternoon. I'm Susan Grant-Hawley. I was gonna say hello, Mayor Liccardo, but I don't see him, but council members. I'm a lawyer, a historic preservation lawyer, representing the St. Clair Historic Preservation Foundation. I've sent some letters, and I'm not going to repeat those. I did want to say that I have, there's concern that this project that was planned and has been pending for so long has significant problems. And despite the design excitement by many and all the work done by your staff and others, both state law and your own local ordinances require that because there will be significant impacts to this project, the city has to look at alternatives and mitigations. And the city can't jump to a statement of overriding considerations that, that this is all worth it. They first have to look at the feasibility of mitigation. And in this case, the, there are not substantial goals and objectives that are not accomplished according to the EIR. There's one objective that wouldn't be accomplished by the alternative of going to Discovery Meadow, and it's number seven out of 12. So it's not that it's a main objective. That isn't true. My time's gonna run out. I'm, I did write to you about the historic preservation permit that is part of this plan, even though not before you tonight. Basically, the, the findings that are before you that it's infeasible to move the Pavilion that's causing all of the problems, the historic and other problems moving it, there is not substantial evidence to support your finding. The EIR doesn't say so. Your staff report doesn't say so. We ask that you look at feasible alternatives that can allow this project to go forward without the Pavilion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Tim Quigley.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I join my colleagues, my neighbors, actually, Marie, Vicky, Jackie, and Karen as representatives from St. James' Place, which is actually right on the park. And I've been there for 16 years, and we're located at the northeast corner of the park. Notable to this conversation is, we've been the only complex on the park up until this year, when the James Condominiums on the southwest corner joined us. And eventually, there is plans for the new complex on the northwest corner. So into the future, this park will be directly and almost completely surrounded by residents and families. It's our collective position that this plan will negatively impact the character, environment, and nature of its historical landmark, changing the original garden design of the park from a family, neighborhood-friendly experience into an entertainment and commercial enterprise, and for that, for which the location is not well-suited, as you've heard, and for which the city is not adequately equipped to properly manage or supervise. As an example, and you've heard, the Pavilion is actually 65 feet from my bed in my master bedroom, with the 300 events, 52 of which are envisioned to be 5,000 attendees or more per year. That's almost one every day consecutively for 10 out of 12 months. The sound attenuation alone will destroy the historical value of the park to say nothing of our quality of life. Additionally, this plan does not adequately address or account for public cleanliness and upkeep, constant public safety and policing demand, drug trafficking and homeless mitigation, continuous traffic disruption, and vehicular parking load impact to the community around it. We do support the activiz- activating the park in a more integrated and contemporary historical and neighborhood-friendly venue, including an open-air, in-the-round, Grecian stage. The current plan, however, misses the mark and destroys a major city cultural heritage venue.
Oh, Tim? No. Tim, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. JT?
This is awesome. Helps put San Jose on the map for parking. I think we should do underground parking. And I'd like to see another project like this, but put it in East San Jose. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Curran?
Good evening, Mayor Liccardo and city council members. I'm Jeff Curran, Principal of Studio Current Urban Design and Architecture. My office is on the park. My wife Tamara and I own property on St. James' Park. 35 years ago, I was married at Trinity Church on the park and had my wedding reception at the San Jose Athletic Club on the park. And for years, Tamara and I ran an urban ministry at the old Oasis nightclub site on the park. I think that St. James' Park is a vital part of the success of our downtown. It's been neglected and in a state of disrepair for decades now. The proposed plan with both the Levitt Pavilion and the park upgrades will once again make this a vibrant and active place for our downtown residents and workers and visitors. The plan does respect history while creating a very user-friendly park. I don't see any reason why St. James' Park shouldn't be one of our dearest downtown treasures and activity hubs. And it's a great idea to cut off Second Street from bisecting the park. That's amazing, as well as adding a cafe and food venue in the park. And so I urge you to support the approval of the park plan and the performing arts facility. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Bob Carlson, good to hear from you. Bob, your device appears to be muted right now. We're not able to hear you yet.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. So Mayor Liccardo and council, as you know, I am Bob Carlson, former Chair of the Downtown Parking Board. I use a model of St. James' Park to be like Yosemite. Donald Trump wants to sell federal parks like Yosemite to private groups so they can build. Many are most considered a travesty. City of San Jose wants to build a nonhistoric structure. It's a virtual sale of historic St. James' Park. Thereby, the park will no longer be historic. I know the travesty. The neighborhood wants to keep it an historic park. So far, no organization in the city has heard us. Hearing us means a response, not a nod. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann Salas, welcome, Mary Ann. Mary Ann, your device is still muted. We're not able to hear you yet.
Okay, I'm here.
There you are.
Hello, council and mayor. Thank you for your service to our community. I'm here to speak in favor of Pavilion and the park plans. I'm, I'm actually surprised to hear some local neighbors speaking against, and I'm really sorry to hear those sentiments, but respectfully, I have to remind you that it is a public is a public park, and for a very high-density impacted city, our, our open spaces are dear and important to us. I'm a community organizer, I know what a small group of concerned citizens can do. I know that this group is incredibly well-versed in getting things done, and I hope this all goes through as planned. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mary Ann. All right, we'll come back to the council, and I just want to thank everyone who's been working so hard on this, all the members of, friends of Levitt, who have been meeting over many years now, and, and thank you certainly, Phil, for taking on that role in leading the effort. Thank you, Rick Holden, for your years of service. Thanks, of course, to Nicole Burnham and Katie Martin for shepherding the master plan process and for your monthly interaction with the advisory group at St. James. And thanks to Ed Batista, who's overseeing the successful migration of feeding programs from the park to the African-American Community Services Agency. I really want to thank Malon Ballantyne, the CEO of that agency, who's been just a great champion for the community. Actually, I'll come back to a question on that. And Brandon Casper, thanks to you and your maintenance crews that make the park sparkle. Want to also thank folks who've been working on the park design at Wood Moss and C M G. and Jason Kelly Johnson, Future Cities Lab, which is now, I think, Future Forms for their aspirational design. And I'd also really like to thank Chuck Tenneis Sketter and Ernie Yomani and Case Swenson for your efforts, volunteering your time to see how we could make this work, particularly from a fiscal standpoint. So with no further ado, thank you, Councilmember Pross, for all your work on this effort. You're up next.
Thank you, Mayor, and appreciate you taking the time to offer thanks to all the individuals that have helped along the way, and indeed, we still have many years remaining, and, and I certainly hope that we get to a point where we see the reality of this vision come to life. And, you know, for, for myself, I think, you know, the, the concept of having a family-friendly park in the, the center of downtown is something I, I certainly am looking forward to. Unfortunately, that's not the case with St. James Park right now. It's not a place I feel comfortable bringing my son. That, that playground is not a place I, I would bring him, let alone necessarily myself at the moment. It's certainly a park riddled with challenges, drug use, needles, we've heard homeless individuals that have...
Councilmember Pross, I think we're losing your audio here.
They've taken up camp bases, and unfortunately...
We're losing your audio.
Just underutilized by the manager.
Councilmember Pross, we're not actually able to hear your audio right now. So why, why don't we do this, Councilmember Pross, if we could, if we could ask...
Going out.
Hold for a moment. Now, Councilmember Foley, raise your...
Can you back to me?
Yeah, why don't I come back to you, and maybe you could fiddle with your Wi-Fi and see if that works? We'll come right back to you. Councilmember Foley?
Yeah, sorry, Mayor, I'll, I'll try to, I'll, I'll, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Foley?
Great, thank you, and I appreciate the presentation from staff, and I also appreciate the comments from the neighbors and surrounding residents. I have a few questions. If we approve the master plan today, what is the phasing that will occur from a time standpoint, time and funding standpoint, as it relates to the, the pavilion? Is that third phase, second phase? Where's the money coming from? Who has to raise the money? What, what kind of, and will this come back to us?
Sure, Nicole Burnham with PR N S, this will need to come back to you. So we have, the, the complete build-out of the plan is upwards of sixty million dollars, over sixty million dollars. Our engineer's estimate from Public Works puts the Levitt portion at twenty to twenty-seven million, including all the design and permitting. What the mayor referred to earlier, and some of the people he was thanking, is there is a team of community members who have volunteered some of their time to, to look at the design, particularly around the pavilion, and evaluate if there are ways we can, we can drop that dollar value down. So we're still evaluating project costs, construction costs, and how to move forward. We have, right now, in reserve, in the capital funds of PR N S, eight million dollars. It's sitting in reserve, we can't activate it and move it into the project and move forward without coming back to you and, and talking about that. We felt like, right now, given some of the uncertainty around, the, the E I R. is complicated enough, and the capital vision is complicated enough, and we're still working with Public Works and the community team on construction pricing, which will help us understand how to move forward. So it made some sense to, to split the two, the two items apart. So, so you will see this again before anything gets built.
Before any part of the improvements to the park get built?
Yes.
So what is the priority, number one priority to, to implement at the park, to develop at the park? What's the first thing that you'll come back to us for?
If we can afford to fund it fully, it would be Levitt. I mean, the most recent council direction that we have sets priority on the pavilion and closing Second Street. Those were the two areas of the park we were, we were directed to focus on. So that would be our first priority, but it's still unclear if we can, if we'll have the funding for that. And, and some of the funding's going to come from the community group, the Friends of Levitt, who you heard Phil Mareska speak. So that group will be doing fundraising. So we all need to get together and, and figure out how we might move that forward. And if we can't move that forward, then that becomes a different discussion of what we prioritize. And I think we would look to prioritize those park elements that would support everyday activation of the space, things like the playground or the water feature, things that are going to bring people and have them want to be there regularly. Because, you know, one of the six, one of the keys to activation in a successful park is getting people to the park more regularly. So that's what we would look to, look to drive forward first.
And what do, thank you, and, and, so it sounds like we're a long way from having the twenty to twenty-seven million. Are those, how much are of that estimate is private funds commitments? Or not, I know we don't have commitments, but how much are we anticipating that would be funding, funded privately?
I'm, I'm going to ask if the Friends of Levitt would chime in on that. We don't have, we've talked about some numbers, but I'd like to ask Phil Mareska if he would answer that question. I just, I don't want to speak for them out of turn.
Great, thank you.
And he was in the audience, if we can get him unmuted.
Yeah, we're, we're pulling him in now. It's Phil Coe? Yeah. Hey, Phil, you able to hear us?
Yeah, I am, and, and again, we're, we're, we're a long way from talking about numbers at this point. You know, our, our first step is this environmental impact report, and that's what we're working on right now. The, the fundraising is due to happen, and the Friends of Levitt are committed to raising significant funding to help make this happen.
Okay. Who will, because the, the main concern from the neighbors, and thank you, Phil, I guess I have a few questions for you. The main concern about the residents or the neighbors are the three hundred performances, the five thousand people, and that raises concerns for me as well. So who will be responsible for taking care of safety, parking, trash, traffic, noise, security, before, during, and after these events on a daily basis? Is that a county or a city responsibility, or will that be the Friends of group?
The Friends of Levitt is committed to the operation of the pavilion. That will be our responsibility. And to address the question of, of numbers, we are committed to fifty free, family-friendly concerts. And at the, at the pavilions across the country, the numbers range from a thousand to two thousand people on a regular basis. The five thousand number is an extensive high number. We don't expect that, certainly in the not, the, in the first few years. We're also taking a lot of steps to, to address the sound issues. Sound technology has come a long way, and we can actually direct the sound exactly at the people we want to hear it and away from the people who don't want to hear it. So it is very possible for a Levitt pavilion and neighbors across the street to coexist. It happens in other pavilions. There are many people whose home prices have gone up because their balconies overlook pavilions in Southern California. So we have looked into this. I, I want to be clear that, that the Friends of Levitt are very concerned about staying on the good side of the neighborhood, obviously. And I, like I said, I live two blocks away, so I'm not on the park, but I'm pretty damn close.
I, I appreciate that, Phil. As a Realtor, I probably wouldn't go out there and say that your property's values are going to go up if the pavilion gets, gets built. And as someone who's ultimate, very, very noise-sensitive, my, my husband would say I'm worse than that, that it would probably bother me no matter what you did, but I, I can, I understand the concerns of the neighbors, the immediate neighbors, and I also can understand the support of those who don't live in the immediate neighborhood and how they want to activate that park. One more question for you, Nicole. Thank you, Phil, I appreciate those, those questions, and it sounds like we're a long way from Levitt Pavilion getting built, and it's, it sounds like we're a long way from doing, bringing in the playground or the gardens. And, and actually, I'd like to see us prioritize that component over the Levitt Pavilion, but there may be a reason that we're doing it the way we are. What will happen to the unhoused folks who live there right now when this project goes forward?
Well, that's a, that's a great question. So what we, the way we handle this, and we run into this frequently on projects, our Public Works team works with the Housing Department and works with the, with the group of, of people that are housed there. If we were to build the park all at once, we would close the park fully down, and it would be fenced off for the duration of construction. So let's follow that scenario through. So we would re, do outreach to the, to the people who are there, let them know the construction's coming, and we would help them relocate if they needed to, or if they requested that support, and if not, they just move on their own. So, but we, we do work with the community to try to assist in relocation if we can.
And do we have a, a handle on how many unhoused people are currently living there?
I don't, I see Cesarelli here, I wonder, do you, I don't have a current handle, I haven't been out there lately. Do you?
No, I don't know how many are living, living there twenty-four-seven. We have people there quite a bit, but they, they migrate from other areas, too. Not every homeless person you see there is living there in that park. In fact, they tend to live in other areas of the city and come to the park to do, you know, all the things they do.
Okay, I appreciate that. I, I, you know, frankly, I, I have mixed feelings about this. I, I, I see the need to redo the park and support the improvements there, but I am sensitive to the concerns of the immediate neighbors who live at St. James Place and other surrounding, immediately surrounding neighborhoods. But I, on the other hand, I'm, I want to see San Jose, downtown San Jose activated, and the more activities you have downtown, the more people will live downtown, and the more vibrant downtown becomes. So I, I really have, it's, it's a dilemma for me, so I'm glad to hear that I will have an opportunity to vote on this again as it comes forward. I'm, and I am very concerned about the fundraising and the fundraising ability to raise the funds for the pavilion and then the mitigation effort. So when the fun, the pavilion comes through with fundraising, I would definitely want to see an operation budget and how they intend to fund the maintenance and the security and all those other issues that will surround the, the, the events. And Phil, I know you have experience with events, so I know this is your thing, and you can come back to us with a detailed plan, but I just wanted to express my concerns. Thank you, that's it for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember, I just want to make one more point, that we will, not only do we need to come back with the implementation plan, but we have not entered into a formal agreement with Levitt yet. So we will need to come back for that, and that's where you will see that detail of how much money each party puts in and, and how the operational element, how we will operate.
Good to know. Thank you very much, Nicole, I appreciate that.
All right, Councilmember Pross?
Okay, great. Is my audio any clearer now?
It's better, yeah.
Okay, sorry for that. I am outside, so you may hear some random noises. So I think, try to pick up where I believe I might have left off, just talking about the, the interest that I have personally, to have a, a, a family-friendly park in, in the middle of downtown. Then unfortunately, we, we don't have, St. James Park is not that park today, it has not been that park for decades. And unfortunately, as we know, what, what it, it has been, is a location where you can, you can consistently find needles throughout the park, people drinking, individuals soliciting prostitution, drug dealing, you name it, a lot of chances at St. James Park. And, and to Councilmember Foley's questions and comments, and, and John did a good job in answering, it actually is not necessarily a location where we have a lot of unsanctioned campments as far as people sort of taking up residency there. We do have that time to time, but even during COVID has not necessarily been a location where we have major growth in, in a camp. Unfortunately, it's not a congregation point for everybody, and for it to be, that's, that's not what it is today. But what we do have is, is regardless of the Levitt Pavilion, which I will speak to, but regardless of the Levitt Pavilion, we as a city have a responsibility to, to be able to reinvigorate this park. And, and in fact, I think we did a tremendous job on having a competitive process to ask the community, professionals in the community, to design what it may look like. And in a panel of individuals, myself included, that were able to, to vet out some of these, these tremendous designs and ideas, and at the end of the day, I think, came forward with, with what you're looking at now, something that embraced the historical elements of the park. And not only that, it actually incorporated a history walk, something it doesn't have today, that actually will, will take you from every single monument there to the next, and, and then take you along a path around the whole park. And, and so embracing the history that is there. But unfortunately, we've had, through history, we've had things that have really put the park at, or been a detriment to the park, things like slicing Second Street right through the middle of it, and then ultimately putting the light rail, which, if we can get rid of both of those components, would be even better. But, but I think it is a great intermediate step to, to get rid of vehicular traffic and only maintain the light rail, which is pretty slow and, and not as frequent as we would have vehicle traffic. But we can't necessarily combine the, the park again, and, but what we can do is all of these elements that we're, we're talking about, starting again with embracing the history of the park, but then building into it the family-friendly components that, that we would like to see, the, the playground elements, which again, exist today, but are unusable for, for families. And, and one of the things that I think is really important to note is, if we were to, to start, and as Councilmember Foley points out, and, and I'm not necessarily against having the, having a, a different set of, of priorities on how we build in these elements to the park, but I think there's a reason why we, we decided as a council to prioritize Levitt, and it's because what we have seen Levitt be able to do for other communities, and namely, one which I would say was it down in L A, which the park in L A, the challenges that...
I think it's starting to lose you again.
Drug use.
Okay. Yeah, you, you started moving, I think, into an area where we're starting to lose you again.
I am, I am, I'm pacing, sorry.
Okay.
Just because I'm outside, so I, I apologize. And so I paced to the wrong area, I guess. So is this, is this better?
Yeah.
Back to where it started, sorry. So what I was talking about was, was, was what I was able to see... So um, what I was talking about was it was was what I was able to see happen in LA at MacArthur Park. And MacArthur Park sharing uh, similar and and in some case, in many cases, actually uh, a lot more challenges than what we see in Saint James Park. And what the Levitt was able to do, rather than just, say, improve a playground area that unfortunately would not change the usage overall of a park, would not necessarily change who or what is happening there. Levitt was able to come in and activate it on a regular basis. These fifty free concerts happening, and as uh, Phil pointed out, I think that's one of the things that that, I think it gets uh, blown out of proportion a little bit. The 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 belief that um, the Levitt Pavilion is going to be bringing in uh, just hundreds and hundreds of concerts every year with uh, thousands and thousands of people, uh, is not what happens at all the other Levitt Pavilions. What does happen is more realistic, which is uh, the the fifty free concerts, a good number of them, very, very small concerts. And uh, in in very family and community friendly, certainly a good number of of concerts that will generate uh, more population and uh, and errors, more of uh, more attendance. Uh, but those are actually few and far between, uh, these larger concerts that I think some of our community has the belief that that exists. Uh, and in fact, that the concerts that I was able to to watch you see on a regular basis. Um, and and you have maybe a couple dozen uh, individuals, uh, certainly no more than a hundred and 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 some great family-friendly acts, uh, to fill these these fifty free, fifty free concerts. Uh, so I think no doubt, there there is an opportunity, there will be times where uh, we will have a lot of people there. We have that today, right now, with Saint James Park is time to time, it's activated with things like music in the park. Uh, and I think that's pointed out well in the in the EIR, something we did not uh, we didn't see uh, necessarily that was going to be a surprise. We we knew that indeed, uh, noise could be an issue, but as Phil points out, uh, that is since why we wanted to have the back of the shell of Levitt Pavilion uh, be facing the residents and have the music or the sound actually amplified in the opposite direction, uh, and in a way that that can be mitigated to actually have it stick to the areas that we want. And and as Phil mentioned, and have it directed away from the areas that we don't. Uh, and additionally, just the operational components, like what we've put in on the restriction is speaking to that point as well. Uh, and and so what what I was able to see though, that 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 turned around MacArthur Park uh, was that sheer activation of those fifty free concerts, the more consistent activation that brought out the entire community. And a lot of individuals that may be homeless uh, there, and and that's never been our goal to somehow just displace all the homeless within Saint James Park. It will be the case certainly during construction that that, you know, individuals will not be going to stop somebody from our homeless community from returning to the park uh, as a place that they want to hang out during the day, uh, much like when the rest of the community does. The difference will be that it won't just be what it is now, which is predominantly just our homeless community and individuals that are there. Again, soliciting drugs or prostitution or 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 uh, in use of of alcohol and drugs. It'll be the entire community. Uh, it'll be a place where everybody can can come uh, and enjoy. But we need to have a major shift, a- and that's what I think this opportunity of Levitt does. It brings in that 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 opportunity, that consistent usage that is family-friendly, that that does invite in the entire community. Uh, and and I've seen it actually work. I've seen it transition in area like MacArthur Park. Uh, and and I think what's really important, and we heard these comments as well, is somehow uh, this is uh, you know, a corporate, I guess, partnership or or where we're kind of turning over a public asset. And that's not the case. This is a public park and will continue to be a public park. What Levitt Pavilion is, is an idea and a blueprint, but it requires community, our local community. Resident volunteers, individuals that we've had that have been serving on the Friends of Levitt now, uh, it requires them to be a part of the the program. And it requires them to help to activate and run the park itself. And uh, and and it's going to be an opportunity for us to engage all of our community in doing so. Uh, but it's by no means us handing over the keys of Levitt Pavilion to, or excuse me, of 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 Saint James Park or the pavilion itself over to the Levitt uh, group. Uh, it it is a a complete partnership. It's a public park and public asset. Uh, and so I I I know that there are certainly a num, good number of our community members that live right there immediately next to the park. My good friend, um, Tim Quigley, who I hate to disagree with and and rarely do. Uh, but I I I think that this is going to be a major asset for our community and uh, and look forward to the work ahead. But I think one of the the things that we also need to recognize is we're, we are nowhere uh, near actually having this complete. Uh, and the big question mark is the funding. And we know this uh, to be true now. Uh, and and it certainly will be as the 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 months and the years go forward. Uh, and and I am hoping uh, we can work together as a community and with the Friends of Levitt uh, to actually, again, achieve this this vision. So I I will make the motion to approve uh, the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Second.
Motion in second, uh, Councilman Crossco. Uh, Councilman Crossco.
Thank you. Um, well, Councilwoman Peralas, uh, I think speaks for for both of us. Uh, we've been here a while and and we're here from the beginning when when these conversations started. I I just want to take you down a little bit down memory lane for me and why, why for me, uh, even though I don't represent District Three, but I fully support uh, the development of this and of course, with with a lot of input from the community. Uh, you know, uh, six months before I took office, I I won my my election in the primaries. And so it gave me a lot of opportunity to to do a lot of work before I I took office. And and one of the things that I I had an opportunity to do was to go on uh, on a trip to New York City uh, to see what parks had done to transform communities that had been uh, riddled with with drugs and crime, violent crimes, uh, assaults on women, uh, prostitution, you name it. One of the parks in particular that really uh, stood, stands out for me, uh, has always stood with me. Uh, especially when I came into office was uh, in Midtown Bryant Park. And Bryant Park was smack in the middle of high rises and, you know, uh, one of the things that really was was just a very interesting point was that these buildings couldn't, couldn't get filled. And and one of the reasons was because uh, there was this park in the middle of all these buildings that attracted crime. And uh, I think they were saying that there was a uh, basically it averaged to one and a half crimes per day. Uh, and so when folks went in and signed a lease in these buildings, they had a legal obligation to let the tenants know and to uh, inform the tenants that they had to tell their workers, their their employees that about what was happening in Bryant Park and to let them know where all the entrances were to the metro. Uh, and this is just how dangerous it was. And so, of course, things are very, very different there. And how they develop the park is a absolutely a very different story. Uh, there was a special assessment and that's how that park got developed. But but the fact was that the park really was a game changer and transformed an entire community. And now the joke is that if if uh, if you want to get married, it's really where you go and find a spouse or your life partner. Uh, there's so much activity, so many wonderful things are happening there. Um, I I've had an opportunity now to go back there several times to see everything that happens during the day and even into the late hours. Uh, and just, you know, there's an outdoor library, there's a tiny little carousel. Um, the prima donnas give a free concert once a year. Um, out in the open, there's, there's concerts, there's a wine garden. There's just about everything that you can imagine is happening there. It's fully activated. And in fact, uh, the park has uh, some sort of a very interesting award for the most beautiful public bathroom in the city of New York. Uh, so it's just, it's just amazing what a park will do to transform an entire community and change people's lives. And that's, that was the takeaway for me. And then I had an opportunity to go on another, another trip to Los Angeles. I know LA very well. Have a lot of family there. And of course, you know, I have a lot of connections in Los Angeles, but but I hadn't gotten to know it and understand it quite as intimately as when when I went with our own staff to visit the pavilions in Pasadena and at MacArthur Park. And that was with Councilmember Peralas as well. And I knew MacArthur Park when MacArthur Park was MacArthur Park, not the new MacArthur Park. Uh, and and a little, a little uh, unknown fact about me, it was one of my little first dates that I had gone on with not then known Count uh, Senator De Leon, uh, who, we were just students at UC Santa Barbara. And when his family found out that he had taken me there, they just about hung him by his toes because it was such a dangerous place to have taken me there. And so the transformation of MacArthur Park as the result of and due to and in conjunction with the pavilion made all of the difference in the world. And and I got to see it before and I got to see it after the transformation. And again, came away from it really understanding what happens when you invest in your parks and when you suddenly um, uh, inject uh, a public space with positive placemaking, positive programming. And um, and and you know, like in in the case of Bryant Park, they were talking about how there wasn't even an armed security guards, there wasn't any police officers because there was no space for negative elements anymore. Uh, the positive elements had completely pushed and squeezed out anything that was negative. There was just no space for it. And so MacArthur Park is a similar example to that. And uh, and so when, once I took office, uh, this was for me such an important issue. And this is why Viva Parks and uh, Calle Viva, Viva Calle, I always get it. Uh, Viva Calle became such an important part of my agenda, uh, to make sure that our children and our families had that space in which they could uh, not just uh, occupy, but that they could inject uh, positive programming and be able to fill our communities with um, positive elements. And so uh, for me, Saint James represents the 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 center of the city of San Jose. It's not in my district, but it's a a hop, skip and a jump away from uh, the east side of San Jose. It is a great uh, focal point where we can enjoy uh, uh, great uh, productions and uh, and explore what San Jose could be, what San Jose could offer, what the community could develop into and what we have to offer as a city. And for the caller that called in, you're right, we're not Los Gatos. I don't want to be Los Gatos. Uh, we're not San Francisco. I don't want to be San Francisco. I want to be everything that we can be as the city of San Jose. And I want to make sure that our residents, our San Josean residents can explore who they are and be able to produce uh, their artistic talents on that stage. And uh, and of course, with all of the input and community outreach that uh, San Jose is known for, for doing and making sure that we take that into account, because you're right, it shouldn't be just a nod, but it should be integration of their of their feedback and their comments. I think Saint James is a beautiful park. Uh, it is not, uh, it is not currently family-friendly as Councilmember Peralas mentioned. Um, you know, I remember being there as a very young, young child and I remember taking my children there, but it's not a place where where we would hang out. It's just some place that you kind of drive through and 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 kind of get get through there very, very quickly. But it's a place where we should embrace it and we should um, you know, give it a a new life and and really um, uh, really celebrate it as much as we can, uh, while celebrating also um, uh, a new chapter. Uh, so I I'm very uh, happy to support it. I hope that we can work with the community and bring about some consensus. I'm excited to see what we can uh, what we can create here that is all entirely and completely uh, San Jose and uh, and continue to build the character of San Jose. So with that, thank you so much, Mayor, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparta.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I uh, I wanted to uh, thank my colleague Pam Foley. I think she asked a lot of really smart questions and um, questions that will get answered as we go throughout this process so that we can um, provide the residents of our city um, important information um, that they need to know as we move forward. Um, having said that, I just wanted to say that I I I grew up in San Jose. I actually grew up um, going to church um, next to Saint James Park, even though I didn't live there. Um, and when I was little, um, it was not a safe area. In fact, I don't ever remember it being family-friendly. As a child, um, there was active prostitution in that park and in my church, which is um, a very old church. The police would sometimes come in the church hall and look outside so that they can deal with whatever prostitution or drug dealing or whatever crazy stuff was happening in the park then. And um, and so um, so, you know, I think we're going to have a lot of conversations about equity, about the need for um, safe um, family-friendly recreation and activities um, in the city. And I think that um, Saint James Park is long overdue. Um, and that we should be responsive to the concerns of residents in the area. I also know the senior housing development there quite well. I spent a lot of time in there. Um, delivering food to seniors as a kid, right? Um, as we all um, do our, you know, help our neighbors and our friends. Um, and uh, and and so I'm aware of the density in the housing in that area. And so we should be responsive to their concerns, but this area is long overdue. And um, and I look forward to um, turning it into a a gem for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the sentiments that my colleagues have expressed. Uh, I I want to just ask a quick question about um, the contract with the African American Community Services Agency. I understand that may be expiring soon. Um, and they've, they've been just a great asset uh, for the community there. And I'm wondering, is that likely to be reinstated or?
Um, it is, and um, Ed Batista actually is in um, the attendee side. So if we want to pull him over, he can, he's been working really hard to try to get us to be able to extend that. So if you're able to pull him over, he's probably the person to give you an answer on that.
Great, we're going to try that. Ed, are you with us?
You.
There he is.
Okay, uh, could you please repeat the question?
Yeah, just the the OXA contract, I understand, is expiring soon. Are we going to re-up that?
So it was part of a, the pilot project started in um, July first, um, twenty nineteen. It did expire on June thirtieth. We've been working with the, let me back up to the fact that when COVID hit, we worked with OED, our department did, to move them to a more appropriate um, outdoor location. Um, and that's across from the park. Um, I I'm not exactly sure the exact name of the property, but it's across from the park where they've been doing it using um, uh, public health, uh, social distancing and
You're referring to feeding.
I beg your pardon?
You're referring to the feeding programs, is that right?
Yeah, so that has, so that's where they currently are. The uh, contract with the OXA has it, has expired. The feeding program itself has continued uh, through right now, October thirty-first, but we're looking to extend it uh, through December thirty-first and looking beyond to continue it. It's gotten quite a bit of um, a positive information from uh, in our meetings with the community, Saint James Advisory Group.
Okay, and so by continue, you mean it would be continued with OXA?
Well, currently, uh, the location is too small to accommodate all those participants. And so currently it's still using um, Santa Clara County Health Guidelines and is in that outdoor location.
Okay. The outdoor location is the ZNL parking lot.
Okay. And so that's, that's just by necessity because of the health mandate?
Currently, yes.
Okay, I think I get it. Thank you. Um, I, I do appreciate the, the many neighbors, several of whom I've known for many years uh, who've come out to, to express really strong reservations and protest uh, about this project. I, I take their concerns very seriously. I know many of them have been deeply involved in the community for many years. Uh, but I really do embrace the sentiment that Councilmember Peralas and others have expressed. That first, I think for those who have an opportunity to understand what Levitt Foundation does in parks throughout the country, I think will be pretty quickly put at ease when they see what's really happening in other parks in other cities. Uh, and this is an incredible asset that brings family-friendly entertainment. This is not uh, going to be Led Zeppelin concerts every night. I don't know if anyone remembers Led Zeppelin or if those of us are old enough. Anyway, uh, and, and this is uh, and this is going to be a great asset in the park. And what we've seen just in, in so many blighted urban parks have been transformed is, you know, and, and I know Pam Foley, you, you have your doubts as a professional Realtor. I know you're, you're going to have your doubts and I understand. But this is in an urban setting, a real asset. And the transformation that's occurred in many of those parks undoubtedly has significantly improved property values. Particularly for those who obviously are interested in buying in a city. Uh, they want to be in a place that's vibrant, exciting and, and not vibrant or that is not exciting for the wrong reasons, but exciting for the good reasons, which is why people move to center cities. Uh, and I think we're going to be able to deliver something tremendous. Obviously, all depends on whether or not we have the funding to do it. And we're working I know mightily and I appreciate everything the public works and parks and everyone is doing, sharpen their pencils along with uh, volunteers in our community led by Chuck Tennis Getter to see how we can uh, potentially make this work. And if we can, I think it's going to be tremendous. And obviously, we'll bring it back to the council for a public hearing to discuss how and, 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 and when. All right, uh, so there is a motion from Councilmember Peralas. Anything further before we vote? Let's vote.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Peralas?
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Rosco?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sparta?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
MS?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Ricardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so since we're now past five o'clock, but not yet at six, what I suggest we do is we go to 7.1, which is approval of Payne Avenue Master Plan for the park located on Payne Avenue. Um, and uh, perhaps we'll have the presentation. And we'll see how far we can get with public comment before the six o'clock hour, and then we'll take a break and res- and resume again at seven. Is that, is that working, Nicole? Okay, so
Yes, it does.
Eric, uh, I just need to check to make sure that the Spanish translation is working.
Oh.
Yes. Um, Spanish and Vietnamese are both up.
Thank you.
Right. Um, and I need, um, need to request that someone be pulled over. One of our presenters is in the attendee.
Who's that?
Aria Sochi. Her name, it starts X O C H.
Okay, she's being pulled over now.
And I'm going to turn this presentation over to Eve Zudi, um, and Jason Condit and Sochi. And they are going to take you through.
All right, welcome Eve.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Nicole. Thank you, City Council. Eve Zudi, Division Manager with the Department of Parks Recreation and Neighbors Services. Um, I'm going to turn over the presentation to our project manager, Jason Condit. But before I do, I, I wanted to mention that Jason's our Senior Landscape Architect who's managed the development of this master plan um, over the last year or so. He worked closely with Sochi Montez, who's an acting community services supervisor, working for the anti-graffiti and anti-litter program and had been working in this community at the time we were having our public workshops. Um, the team did outreach over multiple community meetings. I was proud of the work our team did to present both in English and Spanish, both presenting the material and content, but also facilitating the question and answer periods of, of the meetings. Um, they reached out to neighbors in the Eden neighborhood and in the Cadillac Winchester neighborhoods. And we, we feel really good about this project because we're working in a neighborhood that is short on park space and that we were following up on the, the opportunity the city council provided to the community by acquiring the land out here for park development. So the master plan we'll be showing to you is for a 1.9 acre park in District One. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jason and Sochi.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Licardo and council members. Uh, Jason Condit from PRNS. On this first slide, the Payne Avenue site is located in the center of the slide. The surrounding parks over a half mile away include Starbird Park and Mary Jane Hammond Park. Over a, a mile away is Hathaway Park and also Frank Santana Park. Also, here we have the general locations of the Eden neighborhood and also the Cadillac Winchester neighborhood. So some of the challenges to accessing Starbird and Hammond are the walking distance, uh, safely crossing major streets such as San Tom, San Tomas and Winchester Boulevard. And there's also gang-related safety concerns of crossing into another neighborhood. The plan considers opportunities and constraints on the site. And currently, the site is occupied by the former church building, uh, parking lot, a leased preschool facility, community gardens. Uh, there's mature trees in the site and there's also the existing playground, which is shown in the red rectangle. Because of the existing buildings, the playground was situated in open space that was previously a parking lot. And uh, during this presentation, we'll, we'll revisit this playground um, a little bit later on. The zigzag lines that you, that you see surrounding the, the area, that's the existing fences. And then also the arrows and, and S-shaped curved arrows down at the bottom represent uh, site circulation and access onto the site as well as noise from Payne Avenue. The existing buildings and playgrounds are slated to be removed as part of the project, which will create a blank site for construction of Phase One. As part of our outreach, careful consideration was given to meeting locations. This slide represents uh, the locations of those meetings. Rosemary Elementary School was the closest walking distance to the park and was chosen for the first two meetings. It's about a half a mile to the park site. Although uh, uh, Amber Drive Elementary School is particularly, is physically closer, it's about a point six mile walking distance. We also uh, include, we also considered uh, Bethel Church as a location. The third meeting was uh, located at the Campbell United Methodist Church, which is point six five miles from the park site. This graphic shows the area that mailers were sent, which is about uh, three tenths of a mile in all directions from the site. And this also meets the PRNS outreach policy. Uh, the distance is generally around three blocks. The general boundaries um, of this area include uh, Glennadine Way to the north, Winchester Boulevard to the east, uh, Phelps Avenue to the west and Valley Forge Way to the south. Now I'll, I'll turn the next part over to uh, Sochi and she'll continue to speak about the outreach efforts.
Thank you, Jason. Um, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council. So my, as um, Eve's mentioned earlier, my name is Sochi Montez. I'm the interim Community Services Supervisor under the Beautify SJ program. However, during the community uh, outreach process for this project, I was the community coordinator with Project Hope for the Cadillac Winchester area. So during my two years in the Cadillac Winchester area, part of our efforts has always been to ensure that the monolingual, Spanish-speaking and other non-English speaking residents in the community of this area um, receive the information in the language that ensures that the equity and accessibility in the process, uh, the process is taking place uh, throughout the community. Um, so my work is focused on engaging this community and helping them understand how to advocate for themselves um, and their community needs and fully participate in the process as members of, of the San Jose community. Um, in doing so, we ensured that residents were receiving the same information that had been posted um, on the message boards um, such as Nextdoor, the um, online. Um, as you can see on this PowerPoint slide, um, we wanted to ensure that um, although the technology was somewhat limited in this community for them to be able to access this information through um, online and uh, and um, uh, neighborhood apps, the community at the time was um, able to still have the information to be able to participate in these meetings. Um, in the months leading to the community engagement process for this park, the meeting location offi- options that Jason mentioned originally was not viable for the Cadillac Winchester community. As these community residents um, would need to have walked to these meeting locations. And in doing so, they would be putting their personal safety at risk by walking through certain neighborhoods or areas um, that would have hindered uh, that they felt would not have been safe. And that would have definitely hindered their attendance. Um, other meeting location options were also too far for residents to be able to attend since the, their only mode of transportation was uh, the, the mode of transportation was walking for them and that was not an option. Um, so as, as Jason mentioned, um, the first community meeting for project, um, there were over fifty residents um, that signed in. Um, and so we had a mixture of Eden Neighborhood Association, Cadillac Winchester Neighborhood Association residents. At this meeting, we noticed uh, quite a few residents, you know, even showed up with their postcard in hand um, and conversations of how they saw the notice uh, posted either like on Nextdoor um, from some residents and others that they received based on the phone call or reminder um, from the Cadillac Winchester Neighborhood Group uh, during their outreach. Um, the meetings were presented in both English and Spanish to ensure that all residents that were present understood the information being provided to them. Um, at the following meetings, which were held slightly uh, further away um, from the project area, uh, the same outreach that had been done previously was done as well. Um, the attendance was slightly lower, but again, both Eden Neighborhood and Cadillac Winchester were present. Um, I feel, we feel that the drop in attendance was possibly due to the uh, location being a little further away, but nonetheless, the attendance was there. Thank you.
Thank you, Sochi. The, the master plan is uh, representation of the three community workshops that, that Sochi touched on. Our job is to gather as many opinions as possible, uh, carefully consider all opportunities and constraints and offer the most balanced and responsive plan possible. I want to go through a few of the areas of the, of the master plan now. First of all, we have, oops, sorry, I'm hitting the wrong button here. First of all, we've uh, expanded the community garden and we have retained parking on site to support the community garden and other activities at the site. The next area is we've provided open space for passive and active recreation. These areas include a walking loop with exercise stations surrounding the park, uh, half basketball court, uh, seating and picnic areas in a plaza for gathering as well as shade structures uh, for picnicking and, and also gathering. In this area, there will be a new playground that will include uh, inclusive play for both tots ages two to five years old and also uh, youth ages five to 12 years old. And there's also within this playground area, there's also an ex- an existing mature tree that'll pr- provide shade to the playground. Finally, uh, this slide represents Phase Two, which guides construction of a community center. Currently, there is no funding to support Phase Two. Phase Two was a priority for the community and it will provide needed community services to the neighborhood. The community center is not currently designed and the future Phase Two will have its own uh, community engagement process, uh, including meetings, programming for the building and also uh, the building design. And now I'll, I'll turn it back over to Eve and he's going to discuss the existing playground. Oh, sorry, Eve, you're moving.
Yeah. Thank you, Jason and Sochi. Um, I, I think what we've, what we've shown to you tonight is, is a good master plan. It's made good use of the land that's been acquired. It allocates um, a variety of resources um, that are reflecting community input and good park planning for a neighborhood park. Um, but there is the um, playground on site currently, which was built by the community led by community leaders and funded by the San Jose Sharks Foundation. It is a, a topic of discussion in this community and I think it's something you're going to hear about tonight. And I want you to know and assure you that we've taken this matter very seriously. What we know about this playground is it was built several years ago. And as it was built, it came through the, the city review process as a playground feature on private land. And it, it um, met a certain threshold of design, which is less robust than a public park playground. So um, you know, we can share with you the details about the concrete mix, the engineering details. The, the point here is that the, the structures themselves are commercial structures. We source those structures as well. So the playground is, is good. The foundation is in question. The um, the details that were submitted showed that the concrete met a 2,500 PSI mix. For city playgrounds, we require 3,000 playground, uh, 3,000 PSI. That's the difference between concrete you might use to pave a driveway and concrete you would use to, to build a foundation. What that does in, in terms of this playground is it, it may not provide the stability over time that we would need. And so as, as stewards of public safety and in the public realm, we have to make sure that these structures meet a high standard. The documentation we have for this does not indicate that. The other thing we, we kept in mind was the, the potential to relocate this playground. From our knowledge and our records, we cannot find an instance where we've moved a playground. And I think that's largely because the act of physically removing the, the columns, the connecting structures could pose damage at any point. Lifting it out of the space, removing the concrete foundation, resetting it and any point where you're denting, dinging or bending a unit would make the components there not I, not suitable for reuse. So what Jason um, has shown you is a master plan that expands the number of playground features out here. And it beats an all-inclusive standard. So that means children of all abilities can play. And it leverages the site's assets like a large mature tree for shade. The removal of the playground also opens up the site for a large play, uh, large turf area for play, space for basketball and space for more parking to support the community garden. So if, in looking at a site from a brand new perspective, now that it's been acquired and buildings can be removed, we're trying to look at it, it's, at its full potential. We understand though that the community worked hard to build this playground in um, 2014. And so there's things that we can do. We're not ready to start building this project immediately. It's going to take about 12 to 18 months to design the project, bid and start construction. So over that period of time, we could sustain the playground and commit to, to visit the site on a monthly basis and inspect the playground. Um, it's, it's fittings, it's, it's elements to make sure everything's in order to sustain it in, in the safest possible manner. We, we believe that when we develop the, the new playground feature, we, we would want to acknowledge the work that the community did here. Um, this type of community um, building is something that we think is what um, caused this park to develop in the first place. And so an interpreter could talk about the work that had gone in here. And we could theme the playground and run an aquatic theme where, where sharks could certainly be represented to recall the, the effort here. So again, we know that this is a challenging um, decision and a, and a plan for the community, for many community members who've put a lot of Put a lot of time and effort into this, but we also know that a lot of community members are are excited about this new space and the optimization of the. The play areas in this park. So um, with that, we'll turn it over to the council for consideration and Jason, Sochi and myself. And Nicole are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Eve. And thank you, everyone, for the presentation. Given the time, uh, why don't we take our break now and then we'll come back with. Um, community input uh, at seven o'clock. I appreciate everyone's patience. My apologies for the uh, for the delay. Thank you very much, Sochi, Eve, Nicole and Jason. We'll resume at nine o'clock. I'm sorry, seven o'clock, excuse me.